Good morning. Welcome to our September 2nd zoning hearing. We will get started with our pledge and then we will call our meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
At this time, I'd like to call our zoning hearing to order and I'll turn it over to Mr. Peterson to get us started with our agenda.
And thank you, Madam Chair. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When a case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to a specific case. If you're opposed, please stand and raise your hand so you can be counted for the official record. After recognizing the applicant and any opposition, both parties will be asked to come forward and be sworn in. The applicant will testify first and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes in total. There's not a process to reserve your time and there's not a process for rebuttal, so please convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person here wishing to speak on the case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. After that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There are three withdrawn cases on today's agenda and these cases are withdrawn without prejudice. First case is resounding case Z-20 of 2025, Trayton LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard. LDP-32 of 2025, Robin S. Fowler. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard. And finally, SLEP-5 of 2025, Jose Ganeo. This case was withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Additionally, there's two cases on the agenda which have been continued and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z-2 of 2024, Flora Noria Development Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 7th, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-2 of 2024 will not be heard today. Additionally, resounding case Z-9 of 2025, Whataburger Restaurants LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 7th, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-9 of 2025 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, I did get two requests for cases that need to be continued. First one is resounding case Z-17 of 2025, Little Sunshine's Playhouse. The applicant's attorney does have a legal matter somewhere else, Madam Chair and Board, and I don't think he's going to make it today, so the staff would ask you to continue resounding case Z-17 of 2025 until your October 7th hearing.
Okay. We need a motion for this. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Move to continue.
Second. We have a second from Commissioner Massey. Any discussion? Call the question. And the vote passes 5-0 to, that would be continue Z-17.
Thank you. Second case is resounding case Z-21 of 2025, Jose Ganeo. The applicant did call us this morning and they told us that they could not make it today. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-21? There's no one here in opposition, so the staff would ask you to continue this case until your next hearing.
I make a motion to continue it until the October Planning Commission hearing. Z-21.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Blowing. Any discussion? Call the question. And the vote passes 5-0 to continue Z-21.
Thank you. And before we start the hearing, I want to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cellphone, please turn the volume off on your phones. When the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcast and the presentations. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the held and continued cases. All right, first case we're going to hear today is resounding case Z-18, Race Track Inc., who requests rezoning from PSC to NRC for a convenience store with fuel sales and land law at 583 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northwest intersection of Bell's Ferry Road and Barrett Parkway. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-18? Please raise your hands. 24? Okay, left of the record show there's 24 people here opposed to resounding case Z-18. And all those who wish to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Good morning. Planning Commissioners, good morning. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant owners in this application for rezoning here on behalf of Race Track for this property located in the intersection of Bell's Ferry Road and Barrett Parkway. This property is two acres located at this intersection. It's location here by the future land use map. You see it's in the dead center. That's where that intersection is located. This piece is the PSC tract. It's a two-acre rectangular tract located on the north side of Barrett Parkway and the west side of Bell's Ferry Road. You can see where it's positioned there. Importantly, for your consideration, this is showing you the future land use map for this area. What's dominant at this intersection is that the intersection is a commercial intersection. You can see if you're coming from your left to right on your future land use map as you come from 575 and you come towards this intersection along Barrett Parkway, all that you see in red, that's a community activity center consisting of multiple commercial activities, businesses, and uses as a commercial activity center. Once you get to this intersection, you can see it's denoted in pink. That's pink because this intersection has been designated as a neighborhood activity center and one that's been a neighborhood activity center for many, many years. The property itself has been shown as a neighborhood activity center. One thing I want to also point out is that of this activity center, the commercial properties both across the street on Barrett Parkway, Catty Corner at the other corner of Bell's Ferry and Barrett Parkway, the other commercial properties that are designated within this neighborhood activity center are all adjacent to residential. The one property that's in this neighborhood activity center that's not adjacent to residential is this two-acre piece. It's the only one. All the others at this intersection back up to residential in some form or fashion within this activity center. What does that tell you? It tells you that Cobb County's Future Land Use Plan and Comprehensive Plan adopted by the Board of Commissioners has designated this property for future use as commercial within this neighborhood activity center. Turning now, I want to focus just on the zoning categories themselves and which is why we're here. Again, same look, same intersection. You see this property is zoned planned shopping center. That's what PSC is. Planned Shopping Center is a commercial category. It's no longer a viable commercial category since the mid-'90s when Cobb County amended its zoning ordinance and PSC cannot be used, but this property has been zoned commercial. It's obvious why. It's adjacent to a public shopping center that's zoned general commercial. One of the most intense commercial categories that we have is GC and it's located within a community activity center and zoned GC is a Publix shopping center that surrounds this property on two sides. Directly across the street, meaning directly across Barrett Parkway, is properties that are zoned PSC again and NS, neighborhood shopping. What are those uses? One is an automotive repair that used to be a gas station and the other is a third or fourth tier type of shopping center, old-style shopping center that's been there for years and years and years, primarily dominated on the Bell's Ferry side by Quick Mart, which is a convenience store, which by its signage on the outside of the building sells beer, wine, and cigarettes as well. On the opposite side of this intersection, on the other corner, that's zoned GC and NRC that you see there, that's a CVS location at that GC. So again, just by looking at the zoning map itself in conjunction with your future land use plan, I think there's one thing that we can all agree on, and that is rightfully this property, the subject property, this two-acre site should be and is commercial. It's commercial today. We can't use it commercially, but it is commercial today and should be commercial in the future. Why are we here? We're here because your zoning ordinance, the Cobb County zoning ordinance says that for properties zoned PSC located in neighborhood activity center, they must be brought in for rezoning prior to any development and that rezoning must be consistent with the future land use plan designation for this property, which is a neighborhood activity center. And we are seeking rezoning to the NRC category, a commercial category, for a convenience store with fuel sales, which is what the Race Track is. And we're all familiar with Race Track and their operations. And again, this property is properly commercial. If the county and Cobb County do not want this or envision this property as being something other than commercial, they've had 50 years, the county has, to designate it to some other category or to designate this intersection to some other future land use category. Cobb County has chosen to do neither. Instead, Cobb County has maintained this intersection as a commercial intersection by virtue of its future land use plan designation and by virtue of the zoning categories that are reflected on this zoning map. Also now, I want to turn actually to the site plan for the Race Track at this location. This is our proposed site plan with the main building being the one you see kind of tucked to the corner in the back left with the canopy and gas canopy more towards the corner. We have access on Bell's Ferry, which is a right-in, right-out access only, and then a full access on Barrett Parkway at the far end of our property there on the left. This, in terms of road improvements, that will be a right-in, right-out. In addition, we will be constructing a full right-hand turn lane that is much needed turning from Bell's Ferry onto Barrett Parkway. Those are the road improvements that are primarily included here as well as providing along our property's frontage, the 10-foot sidewalk on Bell's Ferry, which is a continuation of a project that the county has been very much interested in. This particular location is ideal for a convenience store with food, with fuel sales. Why is that? By its very definition, a convenience store needs to be convenient to passersby traffic and needs to be convenient to those who would use it. Convenience stores with fuel sales such as Race Track are not traffic generators. People assume that they generate traffic, but they do not generate traffic and that's been borne out and well documented in the studies. They don't generate traffic. People who stop at a convenience store stop there because they're going on their way to work or they're coming home from work. They're on their way home, coming back from home. They're on their way to drop their kids off to school or visiting their school or on their way back from school. It's already existing traffic that's on these two very heavily traveled roads at this very heavily traveled intersection, which is congested. There's no question about it. But again, a convenience store such as Race Track operates based off of existing traffic coming in because it's convenient. The use itself as a Race Track is not inherently evil. I dare say that almost or nearly every one of us this past weekend over Labor Day stopped at a convenience store with fuel sales at some point or the other. We all do. If you didn't do it this weekend, you did it last week when you needed to fill up. We all do that and we all use convenience stores with fuel sales. They're not inherently evil. We are all there. I went yesterday to the Race Track that's right down the street from me because it's convenient. At this location, it does demand that. It does demand that we have a convenient commercial location and it's ideally suited for a Race Track. Race Track itself, if you're not familiar, Race Track is one of Cobb County's finest corporate citizens. It's headquartered here in Cobb County. They run a fantastic business. Why do I go there? Why do others go to Race Track? Because you know when you arrive, you've arrived at a place that's safe, secure, you arrived at a place that they know how to operate and maintain their stores and their facilities and their property in a first-class manner. That's why we go there. That's why I go there. And again, from a security standpoint, they run a state-of-the-art security system as part of every Race Track store. They're tied in directly to Cobb County Police Department, can contact them on an immediate basis, as well as have security cameras that are likewise tied in directly to the Cobb County Police Department. They partner with the Cobb County Police Department at all times for not only the sake of their stores, but also their guests and their customers so that they are secure and securely run. The other aspect of Race Track that we think is highly important, because we're not going to simply stand here and ignore the fact that there is a elementary school, Bell's Ferry Elementary School is directly across the street, across this county and across all of the regions and areas where Race Track is located, they actually partner with schools. They provide teachers and PTAs and school facilities and they partner with those schools to provide them with things that are needed, things that may be desired as well. In partnering with our neighborhood schools, they do an excellent job. And again, why do they do that? It's because they're an excellent corporate citizen and an excellent corporate citizen of this county. Again, this property is commercial and should rightfully be commercial going forward. We believe that the application is proper in all respects, number one. Number two, so does staff. Your professional staff has recommended approval with conditions and we are in agreement with those conditions. We respectfully request your recommendation of approval today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll hear from our opposition to this particular application. I believe those, a few folks were sworn in and you can go ahead and make your way to the front. Just remember that you have 10 minutes across all of those that oppose and would like to speak, so please be cognizant of that to share your time. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please proceed with your thoughts.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Erin Quackenbush. I've been a resident of the Barrett Creek subdivision for 17 years. I've also been a proud Bell's Ferry Elementary School parent since my daughter started kindergarten in 2018. I ask that you deny the zoning change request to put a Race Track gas station adjacent to both the elementary school and the kinder care daycare. There is not a need for, there's not a business need for a gas station in our community. There are two gas stations within half a mile of the site, five gas stations within one mile, and at least 10 within two miles. You can reach 10 different gas stations within a five-minute drive. We are not in any need of additional gas stations. We are not living in a gas station desert. This is a business that operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and will sell alcohol and tobacco products during those times. This location on the corner of the NAC represents an increase in intensity to the surrounding areas, which all have limited hours and limited lighting. This is not in alignment with the other businesses. This location should be a step down in intensity between Publix and the residential areas, not a step up. In addition, the current traffic study does not take into consideration the additional 600 homes that are currently being built on Bell's Ferry or the additional traffic that will result from the expansion of the elementary school. A gas station at this location presents fire and explosion risk. Benzene, toluene, and other volatile organic compounds, VOCs, are released during fuel dispensing, pumping from delivery from tanker trucks, and venting from underground storage tanks. These compounds are linked to respiratory irritation, headaches, dizziness, and long-term exposure risks, including cancer, particularly leukemia, as benzene is a known carcinogen. Regardless of the technology that Race Track claims to use, this will still be an issue for the surrounding areas and the children of the daycare and the elementary school. In addition, despite Race Track's claims that they have safety measures in place, there have been multiple shooting incidents resulting in homicide at Race Track gas stations in the metro Atlanta area. This includes suburban areas. We're not talking about urban crime. We're talking about places like Brookhaven and Lithia Springs have had homicides at Race Track gas stations. In the past year, there have been three community lawsuits against Race Track, the most recent in Lufkin, Texas, in which an injunction was upheld. Race Track is clearly trying to invade communities that do not want their presence and must be taken to lawsuits and draw negative press to the area, which is not the kind of attention that I believe Cobb County wants. I would also ask that Commissioner Allen's recommendations in this case be closely scrutinized as he has received both campaign contributions and a stated endorsement on his website from Race Track. To my knowledge, he is the only commissioner to receive this endorsement and I think this at best creates a question over his loyalties and at worst is a serious conflict of interest. Please consider the children of our community. It is not appropriate to have this type of business in this proximity to small children. I implore that you deny the zoning, rezoning request and make a statement about who is truly important in our community, children or multinational corporations. And if you do choose to approve despite all of the inputs from local citizens, please explain to my son and his classmates, as well as the other children at Bell's Ferry and kinder care, why this is actually a good choice. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Max. My name is Max Ramsey. I'm in fourth grade and I go to Bell's Ferry Elementary School. I have gone to Bell's Ferry since I was in kindergarten. I love school and I love my school and I hate missing school, but my parents are letting me miss school this morning and I think this is important to tell you how I feel about this. I do not think that you should let Race Track build a gas station across from my school because it will pollute the air and the earth. My friends have allergies and asthma, so it would be harder for them to breathe. This would not be good for our health. My family walks to school every day and there would be more traffic and it would be harder to cross the road and people would get hurt. And it's already pretty busy. There would be an increase in crime and I am scared of shooting, robbery, and homelessness across the street. Please do not allow a gas station to be built across the street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We also have someone else that would like to speak. Please come up to the front. State your name for the record, please, sir.
I'm Carl Eli and I've lived in Cobb County for the past nearly 40 years. I'm a retired police officer from Cobb County with 27 years of experience. I was stationed at Precinct 1, which is in Kennesaw that covers the area of Bell's Ferry and Barrett Parkway. During my tenure at Precinct 1, I would normally, when I worked 11 or 12, which is the area that is covered by that parcel of property, I would sit in the north entrance to Bell's Ferry Elementary School. I would write more than a book of tickets a day whenever I would sit there for people turning left out of the right-in, right-out-only entrance to 50 Barrett Parkway, which is where Publix is located. I would also sit in the south entrance to Bell's Ferry Elementary School and write tickets to the people making a left turn into 50 Barrett Parkway. You put another right-in, right-out entrance in that vicinity, that close to the intersection. You're going to have people turning left out of Race Track onto Bell's Ferry Road, crossing what looks to be about four lanes of traffic now, in addition to going into the northbound lanes for the people that are turning out of there. You will also have people turning left into that entrance because they don't want to traverse the entire intersection and turn left onto Barrett Parkway. Same thing on Barrett Parkway. You'll have people turning left out of this complex onto Barrett Parkway and people turning right. You're putting much more traffic hazards into that area of traffic flow, which will be disrupted tremendously, especially during school hours. Would be a safety hazard not only for the children that live there or go to school there, but also for the daycare, for the already current heavy traffic into and out of 50 Barrett Parkway. There are multiple entrances to 50 Barrett Parkway. Most of them are ignored. They go to Bell's Ferry Road and they turn left across the southbound traffic or they turn left across the southbound traffic from Bell's Ferry Road into that shopping center. Do we want to exacerbate that situation by approving zoning this property for a Race Track? I frequent Race Track myself. I have nothing at all against Race Track. I used to be a quick-trip fan and now I'm a Race Track fan. So it's nothing personal against Race Track, but I wholeheartedly hope that this commission will take into account what a traffic nightmare that is being created. If you go and sit at the entrance, the most southern entrance to the CVS, watch traffic patterns in the evening for the northbound Bell's Ferry Road traffic, they enter the southbound lanes of traffic in order to reach the left-turn lanes for traffic going onto Barrett Parkway. They head face-on into the southbound traffic. Same thing in the mornings and in the evenings for southbound Bell's Ferry Road traffic. They enter into the northbound lanes to pass the traffic that is backed up at that intersection. They ignore the lane markings, they ignore all of the striped-off gore areas and the traffic dividers. I'm sure if Race Track is allowed to build at this intersection, they will put something similar to what Publix Shopping Center had put on Bell's Ferry Road's entrance, concrete median that's there. People just pull up to the intersection, turn left around it. There are signs posted both northbound and coming out of that shopping center. I thank you for your attention and I do hope you consider the risks that will be involved with traffic accidents to occur. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning. Planning Commissioners, Travis McComb, Cobb County School District. Approval of this petition will cause concern for Cobb County, excuse me, Cobb County School District because it would cause a hindrance on our school traffic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I think that basically close to wraps of our time, but any other opposition to speak? Okay? And with that, this is going to be in District 2, so I will turn it over to Commissioner Anderson to lead the discussion with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairwoman Fosset. So I have a couple of questions of different staff members, the opposition, as well as the support, and so I'm going to start with, just to kind of tee it up, the gentleman from Mr. McCombs from the school district, and then I'm going to call up Stormwater and then would love, just had a couple of questions for the planning department and then also had a, then subsequently questions for the applicant and might have one call after that, but that's kind of the order. So if I can have the representative from the school district come up, that'd be perfect.
Excellent. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. McCombs, can you tell us the current enrollment levels at Bell's Ferry and what they are expected to be post-expansion within, call it a year from now?
I don't have the enrollments on me, but as of right now, we're currently adding on to that school. We had to ship some of the students, I believe, 4th, 5th grade down to Chalker due to current construction, so we're currently adding on to that school.
Okay. So do you have a sense of how many students will be added on post-expansion?
Well, I don't have the total instructional units.
Okay. I'm just trying to see what, how the enrollment might increase versus where it was now and where it's going to be like once that expansion is complete. Do we have any data on that?
I don't have the current enrollment for Bell's Ferry.
Okay. All right. Also, for your comments on the mitigation or the impact, and this might be a question for planning, but is there currently a traffic management system where there is an officer that directs the traffic there during the school release and entry hours or is that something that does not, to your knowledge, currently exist?
To my knowledge, no, but we've currently altered our queuing lines. We doubled that queuing lines to kind of relieve traffic from being into the roadway, main roadway.
Okay. But as of your understanding is that there's not actually an officer directing kind of traffic?
I'm not a relevant one.
Okay. All right. Do any of my fellow commissioners have a question? Mr. McCombs? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I had another question. I had another question of the, actually, opposition. So I think there was, I'm trying, Mrs., well, actually, Mr., was it Mr. Levy? The gentleman, I might have, I'm sorry if I got your name wrong, but the gentleman who spoke, retired Cobb PD. May you come up to the stand, please? And I'm sorry if I got your name incorrect.
Just so that it would be correct, my last name is Eli.
Eli, I completely bombed that, I'm sorry about that, but I got one letter right, maybe. Mr. Eli. So, so I just wanted to thank you for your comments earlier. Do you have any knowledge of whether there is a officer stationed for circulating traffic, both during dismissal and arrival hours at Bell's Ferry?
I would not have knowledge to that. I work for the Cobb County Police Department, not Cobb County Campus Police.
Okay.
That'd be handled under their jurisdiction.
Okay, got it, great. And then, I guess, you'd mentioned that, just, I wanted to understand this, the traffic point that you were speaking to, I don't know if the map's on the screen, but that right-in, right-out entrance just north of where the label Bell's Ferry Road is?
Yes.
So you were, when you were speaking about the volume of tickets for illegal turns, that was, just to confirm, that was the point that you were talking about?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great.
On the map, it looks considerable, a considerable distance from where the racetrack would be located. It is actually not.
Okay.
It is very, very close.
Okay, great. And also, final question for me is, can you speak to the kind of partnership or policies with the Police Department and the, during your tenure there at least, and the fueling stations where they're just generally direct lines of communication with those property owners or a formal, like, infrastructure for management of security tied in with the police?
I retired in 2016.
Okay.
And at that time, there were no types of direct communication except through an alarm company with the Police Department. And that would go through the 911 Communication Center.
Okay. Mr. Eli, thank you very much. I appreciate. Wait, let me just ask if any of my other Commissioners have any other questions? All right, great, thank you. And then, for Mrs. Quackenbush, I'd like to have her come up.
And I can answer a couple of the questions that you asked of Mr. Eli. There is occasionally an officer on duty, but more often it is a crossing guard who is directing traffic. It is a pretty dangerous intersection. They have, as part of the construction, rerouted some of the traffic, but we still do have the circumstance. The entrance to the school is literally straight across from the Publix and we have people turning in ways that they should not, in and out during dismissal and during drop-off in the morning.
Okay, great. Thank you for answering that. And do you happen to have any information on the enrollment growth expectations?
So, we have, I think, around seven hundred and fifty students right now. Our second and third grade are at Chalker Elementary while we are doing the renovation. My understanding from how they presented it is that the school will be able to hold up to a thousand students once the expansion is complete. We're going from one floor to three floors in one section of the building and maintaining the other, the other spaces. When the school, before the expansion happened, we had, I think, four trailers outside of the school to hold the overflow of students.
Okay. Got it, excellent. And then, so this is more of a general question, so given that this site was obviously occupied by historic structure ahead of time, and it's surrounded by a lot of commercial uses, I'm always just curious, what would an ideal use look like if you did program something here?
I think something like mixed-use townhome with businesses, office space, small business, retail, would not create the same amount of traffic that a gas station would. I'm also concerned about the 24/7 nature of the gas station, because even these surrounding businesses that they mentioned that are across the street are closed at night. So the lights are down, they are closed, there's no traffic at night, and so that, to me, is also a concern. So a business that would run, you know, shut down by 10:00 PM and, you know, open during business hours as opposed to 24/7.
Okay. Great. And then you said something, I think, which was, you'd said, if I remember, if I heard it correctly, that there were five gas stations within a mile?
Yes.
Did I hear that correctly? So when I looked up on the map, I noticed that there was kind of a clustering, obviously you have the Quick Trip cross-street, but
Yep.
More so to the west than the east?
Yep.
So, are those gas stations that are within a mile, to your knowledge, are those more concentrated west of this site or east of this site?
Well, there's some that are, let's see, I guess it would be south on Bell's Ferry. There's actually two that are across the street from one another.
Yep.
So that is very close. There's none west, primarily because those are residential areas. So, you know, we're not, they're not situated to have a gas station. The next gas station would probably be on Canton Road.
Yeah, that's the ones where I've noticed. And so I guess I only ask that because I'm trying to just understand a little bit more about what are some suitable uses? And so I appreciate you providing some of your thoughts on that, and also the enrollment data for Bell's Ferry, which of course, we can confirm and everything, but thank you for giving us that
Of course.
That context. Do any of my other Commissioners have any questions? Mrs. Quackenbush? Oh, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. At this time, I'd like to call up Stormwater.
Hello, good morning. Andrew Heath, Cobb County Stormwater Management.
Good morning, Andrew. So, one of the questions that I heard when we were, I'm just trying to look at your comments right here a little bit more, there were some, can you speak a little bit about the separation systems that are used to control, given that this has been identified as a hotspot? One, how, I guess, how often are those systems actually inspected and what's the kind of maintenance regime? It was a question that during the community meeting, we heard, and some concern expressed about how often those are actually inspected and what kind of treatment expectations are there on an ongoing basis. Can you talk a little bit about more of that?
Yeah, and so the, I guess the idea there is that any site that was developed would have to provide for stormwater management for the site. There are some sites, and particularly sites, that might involve, like, fueling of vehicles, transfer of fuels between trucks and tanks and things like that, would qualify as what's referred to as a hotspot for water quality contamination, because there's always the chance that you could get fuels or some other oils, even if it was just drippings from cars into the stormwater runoff. So, the hotspot treatment is usually a system that's trying to separate out things that are lighter than water or heavier than water from the water itself, so that, that kind of pre-filtered water is what goes on into the storm drainage system. That system, you know, how frequently it needs to be maintained? I think it would depend on the site. Usually, the gas stations are inspecting those things. They typically are not for most commercial facilities that have things like that. They're not typically providing us, like, you know, reports that say, hey, we've maintained it. It's something that they're maintaining as part of their normal work on-site. It would depend on, you know, how much contamination was entering it and how often, you know, it needed to be maintained. And so that maintenance interval might vary a little bit. And so that would be something that really, the way we're operating now, the, in this particular case, it's a gas station, but whoever the operator of the site is, they would maintain it by inspecting it for themselves. And obviously, if they knew they had a problem, like, let's say they did have a fuel spill or something on-site, then they would know, okay, hey, we need to go service that because probably that ran to that device and now we need to go service it. So, the actual maintenance interval, as long as there's no spill or something like that, is probably relatively long, I would bet, probably, I would imagine, probably at least semi-annually. And, but they would inspect it, see what's there and see how frequently it needs to be maintained.
Got it. So, the applicant would have the sole responsibility for maintenance, but the schedule of that maintenance, is there any binding requirement or per-code on how frequently that? I just want to make sure I'm understanding it.
Yeah, there isn't a code requirement that says you have to maintain it X amount of time.
Got it.
Facilities like this that will be privately maintained, and not just that, but the whole, the whole site, the whole storm drainage system and everything will be privately maintained. The county will enter into a maintenance agreement with them so that essentially the maintenance agreement says, you, the operator, you're responsible for the maintenance, but it breaks out in that, hey, this is what you have. You have an underground detention system, you have this water quality treatment, pretreatment system. And so that's a nice document because as time changes and you have different managers or someone at the facility, they can always go back to that document and look at it and it helps them to remember, oh, hey, I need to be doing this, I need to be doing that. But the document does give the county, if for some reason it were a worst-case scenario and the private owner couldn't maintain it for some reason, then the county does have the legal authority to intervene if there were like a real public health hazard and the owner wasn't doing anything about it, so. So we will have that in place.
Okay, but the burden is on the owner to notify the county that there, that existing, that condition exists unless it gets to a point where it's
Unless it became very obvious, like, and someone complained or someone said, hey, this thing smells, or there was something like that, where there was an actual complaint made to us, yeah, then, otherwise, it would be, it would just be privately maintained. They would inspect it, they would maintain it.
Okay. Do we have, have we had any situations, to your knowledge, where as part of a zoning, there have been more, I guess, formalized maintenance intervals or at least inspection intervals? Are there any recommendations of stormwater that have come out?
Yeah, I don't know about in the actual zoning process, maybe during
Plan review.
Yeah, maybe during that period of time, there might be something, especially as development, developed in that maintenance agreement I was telling you about, that would typically kind of be an appendix to the hydrology study. They would usually lay out in there, hey, this is kind of the schedule that we foresee, hey, you need to service this every six months, or you need to inspect it every month or something like that and service it every six months or something. There are some guidelines like that.
Got it, okay, that helps, so, all right, that's good to know. And then, just switching on gears on that, the, so given that there's, it's an undeveloped lot right now, that given that the historic house has been relocated, the actual level of runoff that that generates, can you confirm whether that level of runoff, what, how does that relate to that baseline right now? How much runoff will they have to make sure leaves this site? Is it less than what's currently there? Is it the level of what's currently there as a vacant, unoccupied lot? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, that site, because it's essentially going to be completely demolished when this site is built, that whole site will have to be considered in its pre-developed condition as if it were a forest, basically. So that's the least for our area, that's the best you can get in terms of, imagine I could just snap my fingers and just make that appear as a forest, that's how they would have to model the runoff from the site. The site, though, of course, as you mentioned, it had a driveway on it, it had a barn, some other outbuildings, it had the home on it, so it was not undeveloped before, so it actually had, it actually had some impervious area on it. So, they'll, when they take it back to that natural condition, it's actually gonna be less runoff leaving the site runoff rate than, than it was actually in its developed condition as a house. So we're gonna be a little bit more restrictive on that.
Okay. And the, there is a request for slight variance, I think, four percent extra of impervious coverage. Any reason to think that that would not, based on your review of the site plan today? It seems like that's something that could be engineered away, I should say, as opposed to a variance?
Yeah.
But want to know if there's any kind of relegating or limiting issues that, why this site can't kind of just be within the coded kind of impervious coverage?
Right. And that certainly could be done. The applicant would just have to find a way to kind of squeeze in here or there and just get rid of that little extra four percent that they're over, and then that would bring them back to the seventy percent, I believe is the maximum for the site. And so, yeah, certainly they could do that and the applicant would just have to decide, hey, this is how we want to squeeze it to make it fit.
Okay.
And Commissioner Anderson, it's been, it's my understanding that the site plan was revised to reduce it down to seventy percent maximum impervious.
Okay.
So that variance has gone away.
All right, so that variance now no longer is needed. Okay, thank you for updating that. Okay, so let me make a note of that. And then, the only other question that I had, and I know this might be more of a grading exercise, but when you look at the map there, there is, you know, the slope down into the site that's north, you know, from the kind of high point on the site, which is where, I guess, the C store will probably be located. And it's hard to kind of see, but the, are there any recommendations that will, that you've run up, that will ensure that some of that runoff that would naturally occur would not actually impact the adjacent site? Would that just basically be just the grading exercise where everything is just going into those detention systems?
Yeah, and because this site is gonna be, of course, paved, probably most of the site is gonna be surrounded by curbing gutter and/or, and/or the grading is going to be used to contain that runoff and get it to go to the storm drainage system. If they had much in the way of what we call bypass, that is, area that's not being captured, that's just running off the site, if you have so-called impervious bypass, those tend to really catch up on your flow rates real fast and you, we wouldn't allow you to do that. So, they would have to design the site, and it probably will be done that way anyway because it's gonna have parking and the buildings, you're gonna have curbing gutter around the perimeter, and then that can be used to capture and channel that runoff to inlets. And so between that and just the way the overall site is sloped and graded, they would have to capture that runoff and get it to the storm drainage system so that they could, you know, basically, the only thing, that there might be a little strip of like landscaping or something like that, perhaps around the perimeter that might bypass, but that would be a very, very small, you know, landscaped area, but that's about all the bypass that they would be able to have.
Okay. All right, thank you for providing that detail. Does any of, do any of my fellow Commissioners have questions of stormwater? Okay, great, thank you. Okay. So, let's talk to traffic.
Amy Diaz, DOT.
Hi, good morning, Amy.
Good morning.
So, Amy, can you tell us, the, so I think we got the traffic study, the second submission? Is that correct?
Yes, we received it on the end of last week.
Okay. So, and that was, that was after the, or in time for the deadline?
Correct.
So after the deadline?
It was after the deadline.
Okay, all right, so, so I understand, there might be some, I know you've updated some of the comments on it, but is the traffic study still under review from DOT or the comments that were sent and circulated as part of the packet based on a review of that submission?
Yeah, so we submitted updated comments because we knew that there were a lot of questions with the board about, about this case, and we wanted to answer everything we could, even though that is gonna be an interim update because we will have to update it again after we complete the review of the traffic study.
Got it, all right.
But it had everything that we had reviewed, plus the updated stipulation letter, plus the updated site plan, plus we had had a meeting on that Thursday before we submitted comments last Friday, so the day before, we had actually talked to the applicant team in a, in a meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And what was the date of the traffic counts used in that study?
I believe May 6th, but hang on, I will confirm my memory. Of this year, so just so that's clear. Yes, Tuesday, May 6th.
Okay, so still during school, but a school where, pre-expansion, of course?
Correct. That, if, so, okay, so a couple of things, the build-out year for this development is twenty-seven.
Okay.
So, you know, it's only, it's going in place very quickly. So, some of the questions we would need to answer is, if the traffic study does need to take the expansion into account, is, were any of those people that account is, were any of those people that have been currently moved to another school, were they moved at that time? You know, is the expansion going to be in place by 27? You know, those, those are the questions that would need to be answered. We were not aware of the, of an expansion that was going to significantly affect enrollment when the traffic study was applied for. So we did not direct them to account for anything specific.
Okay, got it. And then, thank you for that. Then just on, on the traffic study, there's some assumptions that usually you approve. And as, as the applicant had mentioned, most of these, you know, generally we've seen kind of assumptions of about 75% of the traffic already is there and passing through. So net 25% of it is actually net new. Is that consistent with what was reflected in, or what is the actual assumptions in the traffic study?
Yes. So what they were referencing is, is a true thing that basically certain uses is specifically fast food restaurants and, and convenience stores, gas stations have a lot of what we call pass-by traffic. And that means it is traffic that is already on the road that is going on another trip that makes a stop at a, because of the convenience of the location to refuel, get food, whatever that they're doing. The percentage is 75% to 76%, depending on the time of day. So that means that of their trip generation, which you guys have in your notes, only a quarter of that are going to be new trips on the road, according to all the statistics that we have. However, we provide you the raw trip generation because all of those trips are still going to impact the driveways. Because, just because they're already on the road, they still have to turn into the driveway. They still have to turn out of the driveway. And so when you're looking at driveway operations, the raw trip values are still very important.
And when you're calculating those traffic impacts, are you looking at it on a per pump or is it a combination of retail and number of pumps? Like, just want to think through how we, what's the driver of the traffic estimates that you have?
Certainly. So under the general, the edition of the Trip Generation Manual, the national resource that we use to calculate trip generation, it was done under the 11th edition. And what that does is it does do it by pump for convenience stores. But what they've done is they have subcategorized, basically, some certain ranges on how big the associated convenience store is. Under 5,000 square feet has one trip generation rate. Between 5 and 10,000 square feet of a convenience store has a different trip generation rate. And then ones that have convenience stores that are over 10,000 square feet has a third. So most of our trip generations do fall into that center category, including this one, since this one has a, I believe, a square footage of around 6,000. So, and then at that point, it is associated per pump because in general, a larger convenience store is associated with more pumps, you know, because it is physically larger. And so they have accommodated basically kind of the draw of the convenience store and the resources that are there. But at the same time, what they found is the driving trip generation variable, so to speak, is, is the number of pumps that are available.
Got it. So whether, so I guess differently, whether a convenience store is 5,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet, the trip generation says those all have kind of the same per-pump generation characteristics of traffic?
Correct. Though a larger square footage convenience store is more likely to have more pumps. So that's kind of figured into that. So.
Okay.
So if you, if you have a 10,000 square feet store, it might have 24 pumps. And so it, it's, convenience store is drawing more traffic, but it also has more pumps drawing more traffic and that kind of collates together.
Okay. Yeah, and, yeah, the reason I, that's helpful information because, you know, business of a gas station is really the trunk, is more so, you make money at the convenience store, not the fuel stations. And so that's, it's curious that the number of fuel stations, there's such a wide range where it's just fixed, especially since I looked at the, I think, six cases we've had in the last three years, actually eight, of fueling stations. And I think this is the largest outside of one that actually racetrack proposed ahead of time, which was, had EV stations and things like that. But, okay, that's helpful information.
And as, as EV becomes more common, I mean, basically a new, a new version of the Trip Generation Manual is, is on its way out now.
Okay.
So by next year, you know, we may have a different answer to that question. We just have to go along with whatever the national standard is to, of the methodology to follow.
Got it. Okay. And then level of service. So level of service on Bell's Ferry right now is a D. Ernest Barrett, on Barrett Parkway, a D. How do we think about what trips that into F?
So basically, that number that we, we give to you, and again, this is kind of a bird's eye view, high-level view of the level of service in the area, because it is based on an ADT, which is average daily traffic. So that's not looking at how much is happening during certain peak hours, which is what our traffic studies focus on because that's much more data-intensive. And really kind of the experience people remember. But there are some generalized tables published by, by Greta, the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, that use daily traffic so that we can get an idea of, given this daily traffic, what is this road operating at? The, the threshold for that road, well, currently Bell's Ferry, according to the count that we had, was a little over 10,000, I believe. Hold on, I'm pulling it up so I'm not doing this by memory. Trying to, but it's not pulling up. So, but basically that, the number that's in your notes is the number that we use to compare against these Greta tables. The Greta table threshold from going to E to F is 16,000. So you look at that and you say, well, there's a lot of, of capacity left. But then you have to remember during the peak hour, which is what the traffic study looks at, it, it's really controlled by the signalized intersections or the unsignalized intersections, what's happening there. Because it's not just who's traveling on that one road, but how long do they have to wait for the people on Bell's, on Barrett Parkway, you know, to be able to turn. So that is what we were looking at when reviewing the traffic study. We're still reviewing their analysis, but the, just to give you an idea, the analysis does support the D as far as an overall intersection level of service at those intersections, when it stays a D in the future. But we're, we're digging into that to make sure that we're in agreement.
Okay. So this, so kind of just laying out some of the, where we stand on kind of the traffic facts. So we, level of service as currently modeled doesn't change, but the model estimates and assumptions don't fully reflect expansion and increased enrollment? That, and is that fair to say?
If, if...
At the traffic study level? I know the traffic study and Greta, two different things, but.
Right.
It sounds like, and correct me if I'm not saying it right, the, your analysis so far suggests that the level of service with this program would still remain a D?
Overall.
Overall?
Now, the, the approach for Bell's Ferry, when you, when you're looking at delay, you might have more delay on one approach of a, a signalized intersection than another. The approach for the southbound is actually an E and F, depending on the time of day, according to the initial analysis that we looked at. So basically because other approaches, Barrett Parkway primarily is getting more time, the people are more delayed on, on Bell's Ferry at that intersection. Overall, it's a D, but when you look at approach by approach, Bell's Ferry has more delay than Barrett Parkway because it's got less traffic.
And so Bell's Ferry specifically would, if I'm hearing this correctly, move, have the risk of moving from a D to a E or F?
That is what we're still reviewing is, is whether or not the, there, there's a discrepancy in the future analysis that we need to, to line up before. I can, can say that for sure.
Okay. Great. All right. I, does that, do any of my fellow commissioners have questions, DOT? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. John, planning. So I guess it's always useful to walk through kind of your thoughts behind the recommendation here. So do you mind just giving us your thoughts on the recommendation? I had some questions on kind of prior cases that, to help us think about how we traditionally as a board looked at this?
Sure. You know, when the staff reviews this, we, we look at five things that are required by the code. You know, we, we check this, check, we check to see if the use is suitable in view of what's around it. And the staff did find it was suitable, you know, seeing how three or the four sections of this intersection are already zoned commercially. You know, we looked to see if the proposed use would adversely affect adjacent properties. And we did not find anything about this case that would adversely affect adjacent or nearby properties. We looked at the future land use map, which is a, a neighbor activity center, which allows this type of use. It allows this, the specific use in the category. We looked to see if there was any negative effects to streets, utilities, schools, and we did not find any. You know, this type of use is typically found at intersections of R-tier roadways. And then we just looked at any other thing that could be useful. You know, we use our professional perspective and we found that, that this use was a typical use you would find in a commercial location.
Okay.
And there were two variances that were on the initial plan, Commissioner Anderson, and both those variances have been done away with now. So then now they meet the setbacks and now they meet the impervious surface limitations.
Great. Thank you. And just as a follow-up on terms of the impact on neighboring, does the planning commission, there were some comments around, you know, environmental effects and hazards. And I know there's, you know, guidance from the EPA on, you know, site selection of schools. Some of that varies, but I've seen at least a minimum of 300 feet distance in some states, some places put it at 1,000. Is, how do we think about kind of those environmental considerations when looking at kind of adjacent impacts?
Well, those two things you just mentioned are things that, that we don't take into consideration. You know, perhaps the, the representative for racetrack could go into more detail about how they address that concern.
Okay. Great. And then the, and I just want to confirm for the audience here. I know there were some questions about the sale of alcohol products. Just to confirm, that is not really within the scope of this body. There's a separate process for that. Just, is that correct?
That is correct. There is a separate procedure to license for that type of product on your property.
Okay. Okay. But, okay, that's a, that's a, just wanted to make sure the audience kind of understood kind of the scope of what we're looking at as a body versus what are kind of other areas. So the, the other question I had was on prior cases. And where my, my, my head is going here is that I, I looked up around, I think, eight cases within the last four years to understand kind of ground-up development. And I could only find one that was really near a school and a daycare that we had kind of seen as a body. That was back Z3 in 2023. And so maybe this is a reason to kind of do more analysis, but do you know of any cases where we've had a fueling station that was this close to a elementary school and/or daycare?
Not off the top of my head, Commissioner Anderson.
Okay. All right. That's something I'd like to just understand a lot more because when I, when I look at the, the eight cases I found, they, they were certainly, there were not a lot of examples of that particular kind of adjacencies. Okay. And then the only questions I had before, I think they were all answered already around enrollment of Bell's Ferry, but. So do, do any of my other fellow commissioners have any questions of planning staff? Okay. All right. And then I'll, at that time, I'll just bring up the, this time I'll bring up the applicant. Hi, Kevin.
Good morning.
Good morning. So you've heard, you know, the, the various kind of inputs from staff and also from the community on this. Do, can you, are there any planned, how did, how's the team kind of think about some of the kind of assumptions within the traffic study? Obviously they were signed off on initially, but then there were, is up, I think, matters of import, if you will.
Right.
That are probably going to affect and impact some of those findings. Can you talk a little bit about how those are either taken into account in the current analysis or expect to be taken into account?
Sure. I can talk to it generally. As far as the, the traffic study process, as Ms. Diaz noted, you know, there, there's a lot of back and forth between our traffic engineer professionals that are independent, by the way. They're not employees of Racetrack, but it's an independent professional engineering firm located here in the county. There's a lot of back and forth of review, comment, review, comment to, to get to a conclusion that, at this point, there was a fairly lengthy meeting last Thursday, as Ms. Diaz noted, where even further details were discussed and agreed upon at that point in time. We feel very good about our traffic study and about our, about our findings, but we certainly respect that Cobb DOT has said, you know, we, we're, there's a couple of things we want to look at as well in addition before they accept the study. But we feel that we're in a great position as far as that goes.
Okay.
But adjustments can be made and if those have to be made, we would make them.
Right. Okay.
In concert with them.
Excellent. Okay. And then, thank you for that. Then the, on the site plan, just wanted to confirm that, you know, the, you, there were two options given from DOT, one which is a ride-out. And can we bring up the site plan on the screen?
Yes, he's going to bring that back up and I'll get it.
So there were two options offered in the staff analysis. One was no decelerate lane, which would have a ride-out only. And then there was decelerate lane, but that would allow for a ride-in, ride-out.
Right.
So the latter is what's reflected here.
Yes.
And, well, actually, can, I don't know if we can see. On prior site plans, I was trying to see if this was, this one does include the decelerate lane. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and just to confirm, all of that area is within existing right-of-way?
That's correct.
Okay. So no need for easements with the adjacent property owner or access from that in order to secure that? So fully lies within the right-of-way?
That's, that's correct. We, we surveyed it specifically and that was one of the questions that was asked by DOT. And we were working through those issues for that particular access point is whether the deceleration lane for the right-end movement off of Bell's Ferry would be within the right-of-way. And we were able to confirm that. And that was one of the items that was at the meeting on Thursday. And it's reflected in their updated, DOT's updated comments as well, that that arrangement is acceptable from that standpoint.
Okay. And this site, DOT had noted in their comments, the conceptual plan, I think, around a trail lane. And I think one of the comments was that the current site plan shows a five-foot, whereas the county standard is usually to be a 10-foot. Does that significantly impact anything other than just a widening of the sidewalks?
No. We, we've now incorporated into our plan for the 10-foot sidewalk on Bell's Ferry in accordance with DOT's recommendations. It doesn't affect, affect it from our standpoint.
Okay. Got it. And then I, I'm honestly still struggling with the, some of the understanding of the kind of proximity to some of the uses that are nearby. And I, I think I did a GIS measurement which showed maybe a 200-foot distance from the fueling stations to kind of the playground north of the site. And I don't know if we could even bring that up here in terms of like the, the map that was shown. But I just wanted to understand if there's any ability for, beyond just the, kind of the buffering, what kind of interventions will, will be possible to, you know, kind of offset the fact that within kind of 200-foot of, feet of a playground to the north?
So for...
In terms of emissions specifically?
Sure. So for racetracks specifically, since that's who the applicant is.
Yep.
Their systems, again, they, as one of the top-of-the-line providers, certainly I think one of, or the top-of-the-line provider, especially since they're from this county. But their systems themselves, in their, underneath their canopies, within their systems, they have air systems that suck that, you know, the vapors and gases and what, what have you, that are controlled within their own system. So think of it like a, like a vacuum system, an air vac... So think of it like a, like a vacuum system, an air vacuum system, that allows those to stay and not escape the property, and they're not really supposed to escape the canopy area themselves, so that they, they do that as part of their normal operations and would have that type of system here. So it's not going beyond the property, certainly not going beyond the canopy area from that standpoint. So that's the type of system that they employ.
And then on, on stormwater, does, what is Racetrack's policy on kind of maintenance, inspection on a third-party basis of the existing oil-water separation systems and retention systems?
They have a regular maintenance schedule that they'll adhere to, and we've got, the best answer was just about what Mr. He said, and that is, as part of permitting, they will be required to, we will be required to enter into a maintenance agreement with the county. The ones that I have seen, especially for like situations like this, seen them multiple times, where that maintenance agreement has incorporated, incorporated into it, what that schedule is, what that maintenance looks like, and when that, and so forth, that occurs. So it's a specific document that they, they work at, at that point in time during permitting. But we're happy to, it would certainly be, you know, not at all opposed to providing that at an earlier juncture, which we'd have to have our particular engineers and look at it and see, okay, what's, what's the appropriate maintenance schedule for this location, given what is here? And this is a fairly typical type of arrangement for stormwater management-
Yep.
-at convenience stores, is to have it underground with the fuel separators and so forth. This, it's in all of, it's in any new one, let me put it that way.
Right, yeah. Aware of that, just trying to understand kind of the, the maintenance obligations on a regular basis, since it was something that the community brought up. Do any of my commissioners have any other questions?
I did have one, just, just, just curious, was Racetrack looking at any other options for sites that were around the area, to service the area? Are they looking at any other options if this does not go through? Are there, is any other thing that they plan to do?
I'm not aware of any other options that they have in particular. I am aware of this option, which they consider ideal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you just tell me about how many cars would enter and exit either way? I guess they'd, each car that enters would, would exit theoretically, right? So how many cars in the course of a week would, would enter this property? Is there any idea?
In the course of a week?
Uh-huh.
It's, it's done by day, just-
Okay.
And I'd have to pull the numbers, and I can use the ones, I'm going to use round numbers.
Uh-huh.
Going to University of Georgia, I deal better in round numbers.
Okay.
But basically, it's done by your peak hour in the morning and afternoon, and there's a total daily of in and, in and out trips. So when you hear the word trip, that means there's an in and then there's an out, so that's for, for the cars. So based on that information, I, I think daily, meaning 24-hour trips and in and out, it was just over 5,000. And during rush hour, you have in the morning and afternoon, peak hour times, just in terms of rough, you have, I think, I think the number, if I remember right, is somewhere around 500, meaning 250 ins and 250 outs.
Thank you.
Which would seem about right. I mean, that's a, whatever, it needs to be successful, whatever is going to be developed here.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. So just before making a motion here, quick thoughts and guidance. The, I would like to get a little bit better data on prior zoning cases. There are several that we've looked at, and some have been re-ground-up developments, some have been just refreshes of existing centers that had already fuel cells, and I, and I do want to understand a little bit more some of the traffic assumptions that were made, and for those that have been built, what actually has happened two years after it. Mostly because I think that, based on what I'm hearing, the IT trip generation, this is a large convenience store format. Convenience stores are the lifeblood of a gas station. The gas brings people to the convenience store. And so I think ultimately, I'd like to understand for these cases, what were kind of some of the assumptions that were had ahead of time versus what actually happened, maybe a year or two post-open, and I will work with staff, I think, to compile some of that data. And then the, the second element would be, I do want to just explore a little bit more any kind of prior cases. I think I've identified one that has had proximity to some of the uses here, and just want to understand any mitigants that were put in place, namely because my worry is around, less so cars fueling, but cars idling, right? Everyone knows a contractor comes in at seven and will sit there until they're, until it's ready to be eight to work. And so I do worry about the location of some of the placement on the site plan. That said, this is a commercial zone, and I do think that it stands out as that, so I think that there is a commercial use that fits on this site. And I need to understand whether that, this particular commercial use does make sense for that. So my motion will be to hold this for another 30 days so that we can conduct that analysis and get that information together to be a little bit better informed. That's my motion.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Blowing. Any discussion? Okay, call a question. All right, pass it's five to zero to, that would be hold, C-18. How about we take a quick break? Five minutes? All right, let's take a five-minute break. Come back here in five minutes' time, it's 10:18. All right, thanks. We are coming back for break, and go ahead and get started with our next case. I'll turn over to Mr. Peterson to walk us through the application.
Okay. Next case on the agenda is LUP 26, Ronaldo Valdez, requests a temporary land use permit to allow more people and vehicles than the code allows in Landline 56 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Walnut Circle, west of Birchwood Way. Is the applicant present?
Yeah.
Okay, applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 26? Got one? One opposed?
Yeah.
Okay. Let the record show there's one person opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
My name is Ronaldo Valdez.
This is Abigail, and Shiver, just coming here to translate, and just making clear that I'm not like a professional translator or anything, so I'll be translator on my best knowledge.
Okay, thank you so much. You can go ahead and get started, Mr. Valdez.
Bueno, que yo estuve aquí, estoy aquí porque me están poniendo cargos por los carros que tengo y no sé qué puedo hacer.
He's here because all the charges that have been presented to him, and he really don't, doesn't know what to do.
Would you like to share a little bit about the application? Go over what you're asking for in the application.
Que si quiere ir sobre la aplicación y que si quiere, qué es lo que quiere hacer, qué es lo que usted quiere que ellos le ayuden.
Que me ayudan a mantener los carros que tengo en mi propiedad.
He would like for you guys to allow him to keep the cars in his property, because they are like, in there, like in his property, but he has all those cars, and like he said before, he doesn't know what to do. And he's asking for you guys to allow him to keep the cars in there.
Okay. Any additional information you want to share?
Alguna adicional información?
This is your opportunity.
Sí, pero bueno, los carros que tengo son porque somos pura familia, mis hijos y mi esposa y yo.
He just wants to stay, the, all the cars in there is just because it's all the, his family and, and his kids in there, and that's all, like, he doesn't have like somebody else like parking in his place or anything like that, so he, he just don't know what to do, and he's asking to keep the cars in there, that's all he's saying.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. You can go ahead and have a seat, and then we'll have opposition to come up and state their case as well. Okay, thank you. You may be called up later, at a later time. All right, we, it's, now we can hear from those that are in opposition and would like to speak. You do have 10 minutes, and you have to share that 10 minutes across any that would like to speak in opposition. So if you could state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Good morning, my name is Charles Player. I'm a resident of Birchwood Estates for 30 years now, and the opposition is based simply on the fact that the neighborhood is comprised of single-family residences, and I think by that definition, it just precludes the need to park seven vehicles on a lot. It, it just flies in the face of the definition of single-family residents. In addition, this particular address, there are, I guess, limited site distances over the hills, there's no sidewalks on the streets, which I, I guess, carries with it the, the possibility of accidents, traffic accidents. And it's just, we, we're trying to maintain the, I guess, the, the, the nature of the neighborhood, just the, the feel of the neighborhood. I, I don't believe, and I may be out of line in saying this, but forgive me, but if this were perhaps in other areas, I don't believe this would be under consideration. Any questions, I mean?
You may have some questions later. Anything you want, else you want to share? You have a total of 10 minutes, so anything else you want to share in relation to the case? This is your time.
No, nothing else I want to share. As I said, we're, it's, it's single-family residences, and, and, you know, seven vehicles just seems to be excessive.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, this is in District 4, so we'll turn over to Commissioner Massey to lead us in our discussion.
Thank you. I'd like to call Code Enforcement up. Yolisa, you can join us, please.
Good morning, Yolisa Foster, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Good morning. Thank you so much for joining us this morning. Can you please speak to why we are actually probably seeing this case before us today?
Okay, we received a complaint on October 3rd in regards to eight or nine vehicles parking in a driveway, vehicle parked on a lawn, and a 30-by-40 trailer parked in a driveway. Before we got this case, we've been receiving complaints of too many vehicles at this property since 2021. They have always had a significant amount of vehicles. The, they were on previous notice for a single-family dwelling, which is the having too many vehicles, and we did issue citations for a single-family dwelling on October 12th of 2024, and then another one on January 27th of 2025. Since 2021, this has been an issue, and it has been the same property owner, along with they park on the grass and they park on gravel.
Thank you. Does any of my fellow commissioners have any questions of the, of Code Enforcement? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have the opposition up first, please? Thank you for coming today and sharing your thoughts about this particular request. I wanted to gauge how close you were to the subject property.
We are two streets over, I think, two streets removed, yes.
And in your 30 years of being in that neighborhood, can you tell us what you experienced with respect to that subject property activities that you've noticed?
Not really, other than the fact that, you know, when we go walking somewhat irregularly, we do notice that, you know, the excessive number of vehicles parked there, and as I said, there are no sidewalks, and, and the, the line of sight, if you have seven vehicles parked in the, on the property, you know, there is a possibility for, I mean, there's limited sight vision, so.
Thank you very much. So does any of my fellow commissioners have any question of the opposition? Thank you so much. You can have a seat.
You're more than welcome.
Thank you. Can I have the applicant up, please, and his translator? The applicant, rather. Can you tell me who resides in the home with you?
Puedo decirle quién vive en la casa con usted.
Vive mi esposa y tengo, tengo siete hijos.
And I have seven kids.
So there are a total of nine-
Yeah.
-currently living in the home?
Yeah.
Okay. That wasn't on our application, okay. And how many vehicles are currently there?
Cuántos carros tiene en la propiedad?
Seis.
Six.
What are the ages of the children?
Uno tiene veintis, va a ser 25.
One is about to be 25.
Dieciocho.
Eighteen.
Dieciséis.
Sixteen.
Ah, catorce.
Fourteen.
Once.
Eleven.
Ocho.
Eight.
Y un año.
And about a year, a baby about a year.
Okay. So do, the 25-year-old and the 18-year-old, are they planning to reside with the family indefinitely, or is there a plan for them to move anytime soon?
Que si del 25 al de 18 están planeando salirse de la casa o se van a quedar ahí con usted?
No, están planeando salirse el de 25, la otra está estudiando todavía.
La del 25 se va a ir?
Sí, tú delas y la otra está estudiando todavía, la de 18.
All right, that one, that it's, the kid that is 25, he say he's about to consider moving like soon, and the one, the 18, yeah, se va a quedar?
Está estudiando, yeah.
She's going to school, so she's staying.
Understood. And how many vehicles are there, again?
Cuántos carros tiene otra vez?
Seis.
Six.
And who drives which vehicle?
Quién maneja los carros?
Eh, mi esposa, yo, y mi hijo, y la de 18 años.
The, the, him, his wife, he's 25, and his daughter, the 18-years-old.
So four, four drivers currently?
Cuatro, cuatro conductores.
Sí, pero el otro carro es para el que tiene 16 años.
Go ahead.
El otro carro es para los que tiene 16 años, y yo tengo una, un carro para mi trabajo también.
And the other car is for the one that is 16, but he has an extra car that he uses for work.
Okay, so there's a work vehicle, there is a personal vehicle that you drive, a vehicle for your wife, a vehicle for the 25-year-old, a 20, and then a vehicle for the almost, for the 16-year-old?
That, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. Okay. Does any of my other commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Um, for the for the house, is there a garage where you park some of these vehicles currently?
Su propiedad tiene un garaje donde puede parquear los carros.
Sí.
Yes.
And how many cars can that garage hold?
¿Tiene un garaje? ¿Cuántos puede meter?
Puede caber dos.
Only two.
Two, okay. Thank you.
With that in mind, Commissioner Anderson, thank you for that question. Um, do you, what's currently in that garage? Do you currently park cars there or no?
¿Qué es lo que hay en el garaje? ¿Hay parquear carros o no?
No, tengo algunas cosas, pero las puedo mover y puedo parquear carros ahí.
He got some stuff in there, but he can move them and then park the two cars in there.
Okay, so per the county code, there are only supposed to be two cars at the residence total. Um, so that's something that we need to consider. Okay. Um, any other questions for my fellow commissioners?
Is he parking trailers at the house as well as vehicles?
Está parqueando las trailers aparte de sus carros.
No tengo ninguna tráiler.
He doesn't have any trailers.
Okay, thank you. You can have a seat. I'm ready to make my motion. I make a motion to deny LUP 26. Um, I would caution the applicant to clean out the garage to allow for parking in the garage of two vehicles, which will give him two vehicles outside to park. Um, and he needs to, within 60 days, find places for the other cars that are not allowed on property.
Second for the purposes of discussion?
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Anderson and discussion, please.
Commissioner Massey, so how many cars total would that?
That would be a total of four cars with the removal of the items in the garage, two cars parked in the garage, two cars parked exterior.
Okay.
Which would put him in compliance.
Okay, got it. So denial with the request to have those other excess two be removed?
Correct.
And I do have one question to Commissioner Massey.
Yes.
You know, the cars were one half of this request, the other half was the number of related adults. The code would allow three related adults and he wants four related adults? Is it your desire to deny that also?
It is not my deny to deny the the adult. Well, the 25 and the 18-year-old know they're children and the other ones are minors, so I don't think that we can do anything about the I will allow for the 18 and the 25-year-old, since they are considered adults, for 24 months and we can come back and revisit that.
Okay, so we're going to allow four related adults?
Yes.
And then the cars are denied?
The cars are denied, yes.
Okay.
Do I need to restate that motion for the purposes of clarity? Okay, sorry, restated. My motion is to deny LUP 26 for the purposes of the vehicles. Um, I am accepting the adults for 24 months. Um, the applicant has 60 days to remove the excess vehicles with cleaning out the garage to accommodate two vehicles and then allowing two vehicles externally. The other vehicles will have to be removed.
All right, we have a second.
Yeah, second for purposes, just of just to clarify, make sure I'm completely sure. So is it a is it an approval or for the unrelated adult for 24 months extra? And that's it?
Yes.
And then that would, that would imply denial of the request for the cars?
Correct.
So I guess, do we need to state that as a denial or an approval?
It was stated as a denial.
Okay.
John, you have any thoughts?
I think the way that Commissioner Massey phrases is is correct. You know, she's approving the extra related adult for 24 months and she's denying the cars.
Okay, got it. All right. You guys are ahead of me on this. Sorry. I need to, thank you for catching me up on this. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much. And we have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any additional discussion? Okay, call the question. And the vote passes 5-0 for denial of LUP 26 with the stipulations as mentioned in the motion.
Okay. All right, next case is LUP 31, Ann Lu Chrisbelle. Request a temporary land use permit to allow dog boarding in Land Lot 934 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Leafwood Drive, east of Leafwood Court. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 31? Please raise your hands. Six. Okay, let's see if we show there's six people here opposed to LUP 31. I get a few people here who are in support of LUP 31. Just one, okay. Okay, all those who wish to address the board either for or against, please come forward and be sworn in.
All right, good morning. If you can please state your name for the record and proceed with your discussion.
My name is Ann Lu Chrisbelle and I am applying for a temporary land use permit for in-home dog boarding at property 3036 Leafwood Drive, Marietta. I ask this panel and the community to let me keep doing small act of kindness to family and friends by caring for their dogs when they need help. Let me continue to board and train at my private home in a real-life family setting. The dogs that I board and train are not homeless yet and this is really their last chance to show their potential to be a good canine citizen in our community. Let me keep working with dog owners who give their dog opportunity to improve, so the dog will not end up in the shelter system. Let's not wait for them to get rehomed three times, carrying the same baggage of behavioral issues. This is the time to consider the effectiveness of board and train program. I don't have any history of animal control issues. On August 5th, after the public hearing, I went to the Cobb County Animal Control and Officer Tarkin did not find animal-related calls for our address and our names. As you may be aware, Atlanta Humane Society is opening a facility in Cobb County. On August 31st, Atlanta Humane Society recently did a home inspection of my home, which was passed and approved. They want me to help them with the sheltered dogs in the service program called Dogs for Better Life, which is a boarding and training sheltered dogs to become service dogs for deaf and autistic and people with disabilities. My house is a controlled environment. The size of our yard is more than enough for a play area. Dogs sleep inside the house after a whole day of work. Dogs only need someone to put an effort to train them with rules, structure, care for them, understand them, and love them. If fostering, boarding, and training dogs in my private home needs a permit, I am willing to make accommodation to being compliant with planning and zoning. There are a lot of homes in the Cobb County community that board animals and your decision will affect them. At the previous meeting, there was a statement on how many dogs should be allowed on a 30-acre lot. The City of Marietta zoning has included a limit in their quarter-acre lots and a third-acre lots of four domesticated animals over three pounds. Your decision will dictate who can come over to my house because I'm working from home. This case may seem so personal to me, but this will affect my family and friends who owns dogs when they would be able to spend time with me and my son. If I am denied, my family and I have no option but to move out and find a place where I can work and continue to board and train. I know this is my calling and this is the this is the type of work that is not a money-making career. At a previous meeting, a concern on the price of the board and train program was raised. I emailed my income information on August 25th to the planning commissioners. I am going to, I'm not going to stop helping families and dogs to become a better member of our society. I know that the work I do affects the community long-term and I chose to have a long-term and healthy relationship with these dogs and their owner. If I cannot do it in my private home in my neighborhood or Cobb County, we will have to find another place. In the previous case, LUP 41, 2024, the request for existing dog training business was denied, but the applicant was provided nine months to cease operation. I know six dogs may seem a lot, but it does not happen every day. I have limited myself to only having six dogs max since 2020 with minimum impact. If you can just give us enough time to prepare and sell our home while still at a max of six total dogs, that would make our transition of moving out a little easier. If I must be capped at certain number of dogs, I would like to be capped at six. Thank you. I do have a video that I wanted to show you, if that's okay. It's a video? Is there, is there audio? ¡Venga! ¡Venga, va! ¡Voy! ¡Venga! ¡Venga, venga! ¿Estás listo? ¡Venga! That's just what we do inside the house. Oh, that's fine.
Madam, your time has expired.
That's fine, thank you.
Our time has expired, but thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, we will see if the opposition has any that would like to come up and speak. Again, you do have a total of 10 minutes to be shared amongst you, so if you don't mind, please state your name once you get to the microphone. Okay? You can hand it to to him and he will make sure that we receive it.
Uh, yes, my name's Carrie Gilmore. I'm a homeowner next door. I live behind her. At the first hearing, I thought this would be a straightforward violation of a zoning law by having a high-impact business in a platted subdivision. Our state representative, Solomon Adesanya, wrote me saying that he thinks running a kennel is considered a commercial use of land in Cobb County and that the permit should be denied as it involves operating in a residential area. The East Cobb Civic Association also recommends denial of the LUP. I left the hearing with major concerns about the discrepancies that I had heard from the applicant. She said she doesn't consider this a commercial business because she is just helping friends, family, and neighbors, but yet she involves the Department of Agriculture and has a kennel license for up to 20 dogs. She says she works also for off-leash training, who gets $3,000 per dog for the boarding train program. On August 2nd, she said she's not doing it for the money because her husband makes the thousands. But in the hearing, she said it is her only source of income and that if the LUP is denied, she may lose her home. Her husband is highly educated and credentialed, by the way. During the during the hearing, a neighbor said that the ones most affected have no problem and are supportive of Anna, but yet three of the four homeowners who are most effective are here in strong opposition to the due to the impact it will have on our property values and safety risks. We also have a petition with 35 signatures who were opposed. Anna said the reports of dog fights are totally false and that animal control has not been called. We will be providing documentation of calls to animal control and 911 on Cobb County Letterhead. On July 12th, she said that she works with dogs that are reactive and require behavior modification and that she keeps them separated from other dogs. But on August 2nd, she said that she works, the dogs she works with are not aggressive. When questioned about it, she then admitted that the dogs do have behavior issues. During the hearing, Anna said that she works with dogs on-leash. During the hearing, Anna said that she works with dogs on leash in public, but the Off Leash Canine Site has multiple videos of her walking dogs off-leash in public. It is also worrisome to me that without my knowledge or permission, she installed a gate in my fence, allowing her access to my property. During the last hearing, she said she would agree to stipulations and gladly comply with anything, but we also have a text to a neighbor saying, "So take me to court if you want. I will continue to do what I do." So I'm here again asking that you please deny the permit. Thank you.
Good morning. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Michelle Cubay. I live directly next door to the applicant. The only thing more disturbing than the traumatizing vicious dog attacks that I witnessed at Anna and Nick's is their constant lies, lack of accountability, and responsibility. Lying to your clients and neighbors about the care and safety of their beloved pets. Using barbaric means to keep your multitude of dogs quiet. Leaving dogs for extended periods in hot cars, extreme weather, fireworks, while they run the fence line in panic and fear, while being shocked in abuse, is abuse and inexcusable. You're putting the neighbors', children, and our pets in danger every day. Telling lies and turning the neighborhood against me to cover up your ongoing negligence for your financial benefit is disgusting. The toddlers that walk our cul-de-sac daily from the licensed daycare, are the parents aware of the immediate danger their children are in? I believe this situation warrants immediate and thorough investigation to ensure compliance with animal welfare laws and local ordinances governing animal training and business practices in residential areas. Since my last testimony in revealing that I have direct sight of their back patio where multiple dog attacks have occurred, within 48 hours of my testimony, they installed a large black tarp surrounding and covering the back deck. People who have nothing to hide, hide nothing. Who owns the dog your husky attacked while in training? Did you reimburse them the $6,000 in vet bills? Let's clarify your training tactic to socialize a dog by turning your husky Hank loose in your backyard while a terrified dog stood there helpless and Hank ran straight over and bit the dog. Your comment was, "It's normal. This is how they determine who's the alpha dog." Another horrific and barbaric training tactic. I would like to request the commission to turn to page two of my handout. Upon hearing another dog attack, I ran outside and asked Anna from my patio, "Do you need me to call 911?" With her husband and niece inside the home, no one came to her rescue as she struggled to separate two fighting dogs. Please read Anna's text stating she will need to install a panic button on her back patio for the next time she has, quote, "an emergency" and the immediate danger of her two-year-old son could be in. Lastly, any testimony from neighbors who have no eyewitness accounts of these events are speaking solely based on hearsay. Thank you.
We had pictures to go along with it. Real quick, I'm James Hopkins and my daughter Christina Hopkins. We live right behind the Crispells. The land use permit application states that she's just helping families aboard their dog while on vacation or emergency. That's not what she's doing. She's operating a commercial kennel 24/7. At the last hearing, you asked Crispell what the impacts would be on her neighbors. She didn't answer. So here's our response. Excessive noise. The noise from constant barking and dog fights causes disruption to those working from home, emotional stress, and difficulty enjoying one's own property. Property value impact. We contacted several realtors. They all agreed that our property would decrease because the kennel would be a deterrent to potential buyers. This will have a financial impact on those who support this and those that don't. How is a kennel license approved for up to 20 dogs and a house with a two-year-old toddler? Her backyard is mostly covered by decks and a gazebo. It's likely why she's using a cul-de-sac for dog training. Excuse me. Invinational impacts. Odor, waste, and disease transmission. Safety is a major concern. A single escape or barrier failure could lead to a dangerous incident. She is rarely outside with the dogs when they are in the backyard. Dogs have escaped from her care, both over and under the fence. There's own daycare nearby where six toddlers and two adults walk in the cul-de-sac. Also, there are risks to students from two public schools across the street from our communities. Other impacts include traffic by clients at her residence, an increase in neighbors' liability insurance, and a need for warning signage. Even if this kennel owner promises soundproofing, fences, and other precautions, the core issues remain. This is a high-risk business with reactive dogs. If a person or animal is injured or even worse, who will be held accountable? When our property value decreases, that's our biggest asset. If that's ruined, who pays for that? We ask you to consider, if this is in your own backyard, three of the four neighbors sharing a property line, strongly request that this permit be denied. We all love dogs, but a kennel in a platted subdivision is unsuitable, and the risk of safety, quality of life, and property values are too great to mitigate.
My name is Christina Hopkins. I live with my father, next to Mr. Gilmore, so directly behind. One of the things I'd like to stress is that I know that the legal system in this country runs very strongly on precedents, and there is no precedent for a kennel in a residential neighborhood in Cobb County. All of the other businesses that have kennel licenses and the ZIP code are licensed to businesses and not to individuals, and they are all in commercial shopping centers and not in residential neighborhoods. Additionally, there are precedents in other counties, not just in Georgia, but in the Atlanta metro area. In 2015, there was a case in DeKalb County that set minimums, which we can talk about. I know I'm running out of time. But they set minimums for those. And then in 2021, I believe, there was another case in Rockdale County which set the same exact minimums that were set in DeKalb for a kennel. Ms. Crispell meets none of those requirements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have about 30-plus seconds left.
Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, my name is Richard Groom. I am the East Cobb Civic Association Case Manager assigned to LUP 31. Due to the amount of time, I'm going to go straight to the bottom. This business should not be located in a... Does not belong in the middle of an R-15 residential neighborhood. This property is not contiguous to any commercial property. This business should be located on commercially zoned property, not on a platted subdivision. ECCA agrees with Cobb County's staff recommendations, and many of the contiguous residents recommend denial of this LUP. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We've heard from our applicant in opposition. This is in District 3, so we'll ask Commissioner Dance to lead our discussion for this.
Thank you. Could I have Code Enforcement come forward?
Good morning. Yolisa Fawcett, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Good morning. Have you investigated any complaints at this property location?
We did receive a complaint about training dogs at the property, and the clients are coming to the house. We received that on May 13 of 2025. An officer went out on May 14 of 2025 and issued a notice of violation for customary home occupation that's operating a business out of a residential property. And the applicant immediately went and filed for a LUP, so we're at a standstill until a decision is made here.
Okay, and so when the application for the LUP was filed, what happened with your investigation?
When somebody files a LUP for a specific violation, enforcement stops because in order to come into compliance, you either stop the activity, get a ticket, or you go through zoning. And since they went through zoning, we're not going to ticket them when they're trying to comply.
Okay. And so the citation was for what?
The notice of violation, which is a warning to educate them on the ordinance, was for customary home occupation.
Okay, which means, I'm sorry...
Operating their business from a residential property.
Okay. And did you personally do this investigation?
No, ma'am. One of the officers went and inspected the property.
Okay. Is that all that you can tell us from your involvement with this matter?
Yes. It stopped as soon as she applied for the LUP. We stopped enforcement and inspections because that was the only violation at the property. There were no other violations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have Michelle come forward? Hi. So looking at your packet, you have some calls made in 2025, reference to Leafwood Drive location. You've had issues, if I understand from your testimony. On your front page of your document?
Yes.
You've listed calls that you've made in 2025 referencing Leafwood Drive location, right?
Yes.
Okay. And could you... I don't think I heard you describe these in your testimony. Could you just run through what you had there and if you had any other previous complaints before '25?
Yes, I did have a few calls from 2024, but I didn't, you know, bring those as documentation. The calls to animal control and 911 were all based on the six dog fights that I personally witnessed. One was so horrific and graphic, I couldn't even... I called my 911 and I couldn't even function. It was just horrific. So I believe I put a copy of that one in your packet, the 911 call, in addition to the list of the calls.
Okay. And so you've called 911 Animal Control and Code Enforcement?
Yes.
Corresponding with Code Enforcement?
Yes.
All of those in '25, and then some others?
Those are all just in 2025. There were a few additional, maybe one or two, or I don't remember, in 2024, but those were not added in there.
Okay, and you're the adjacent neighbor?
I'm directly next to her, yes. Up until a few days ago, I could see onto her back patio, and that's where I had witnessed all the dog fights. Multiple dogs that were much larger than the ones shown in the video, about three times to four times the size. Aggressive dogs fighting each other on multiple occasions. And after my last testimony of, "I can see directly onto their back patio," within 48 hours, a black tarp was erected all the way around the back patio.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Thank you. If I could have the applicant come back? Hello. So at our last hearing, we had some discussions about the intensity of your operations and whether or not you might make any changes to or limitations to yourself. Have you contemplated that?
Yeah, so like I said, I'm willing to take my name off Rover. Rover, if Rover is causing the traffic in my neighborhood, then I'm willing to not be a pet sitter for Rover because my customers and the dogs that I pick up from Boarder Train, I meet them at the training facility.
Okay. Anything else that you were willing to do?
I really want, if I'm going to be capped at number of dogs, I really want to be capped at six. And that's because if I have two dogs and then the two trainees, for example, like today, my in-law came to babysit my boy, and they have a dog. So now that will put me at five dogs. And I have a friend that has two dogs that comes to my house. I mean, like, those dogs, this is affect the work that I do because I don't have to train them. They're staying with us, having dinner, whatever. But six dogs will happen at my house because I have a son. And my family comes over to my house, and most of my families are dog lovers. So that's why I really want to be capped at six, and that's what I've had put my limit from the very beginning since I started fostering. With Mr. Anderson's suggestion last time, and Ms. Massey about putting a visual barrier, that's why I put the cover on my backyard for a barrier because I'm not really sure about planting trees or taking out trees or what. And if we are going to move within two years, I don't think those streets can grow that fast, you know, so yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I have some handout here. One, two, three, four, five. Pass that out for me. Thank you.
I'm not really asking you to testify further.
No, I just wanted to, because these are the things that just recently happened. I emailed the panel with my phone number. I thought you guys were going to visit my property. That's, you know, for the case being on hold for 30 days. So during that, in the middle of that, like I said, Planning Immune Society did a home inspection of my house. Everything was approved. I also attached the copy of the Georgia Department of Agriculture report that we get. The company, Canine Off Leash, require us to have kennel license and liability insurance for, you know, for working for them. When I was fostering dogs, I did not need a kennel license because it's through the organization, which is like the first page that I have in my packet with Planning Immune Society and GDA. So, and also if... If you can just pass this around as well. And just to... Just to give you an idea, we've been living in... Well, we've been living in this neighborhood for eight years and...
Okay, let me just explain something. I mean, so this is an opportunity for us to ask you questions?
No, this is just a clarification of what they said.
Okay. Well, if I want to know that, or anybody else on this board wants to know that, they have your document now, and we can ask you that. But let me ask you a couple other things. So from the last hearing, I understood that you conduct training... So from the last hearing, I understood that you conduct training on the, on the streets of the neighborhood, right? Like in the cul-de-sac?
Sometimes.
Okay, well, I specifically heard that testimony the last time.
Yes, sometimes, yes. Because I do have to walk my dogs in the, in the street and teach them leash manners. Yes. But on the video, like...
Okay, and when you say your dogs, you're talking about dogs?
Boarded trains.
Excuse me?
Boarded trains.
Boarded dogs, okay. So, I mean, your, your permit application says that what you're specifically asking for is a, a permit for boarding dogs overnight, correct?
Correct, because they do stay with me.
Okay, and so those dogs that, that you take in as from a service, right? Or that's who you're referring to as your dogs? The, the dogs that are, that are, you're working in the, in the streets in the neighborhood? Is that right?
Yes, because, yeah.
Okay. And, okay, is that, did you finish your answer?
Yes.
Okay. And, and so you have, those dogs and those dogs are sometimes on the streets, is that correct? You train them in the streets?
Correct.
Correct? And then the video that we saw, that's you with those particular types of dogs out in general public areas, correct? Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for her?
This is Chris, Chris Bell, did I say it right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I just, I just want to make sure, you, have you seen the signatures sheet that was circulated with the, that the neighbors had provided of individuals who had kind of been in opposition? Okay. Have you had a chance to have any subsequent meetings with the neighbors?
I have written a letter to Mr. Gilmore and Ms. Hopkins to open up the communication on that. Mr. Gilmore and his wife, they've always been really nice and highly, you know, highly respect their opinion. And I know where they're coming from. They're coming from property value and I highly, you know, like I said, I, I respect that, you know, their honesty and their position in this matter. So I did not hear anything from Ms. Hopkins. With the one next door to me, to be honest, she had called, she had called authorities on four out of five of her neighbors. So for me, I do not even feel safe talking with her. And like I said, this, this permit, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna get approved or we're gonna get denied, we just need time to move out. You know, we, we want to get approved so we can move out of there. I, I understand, I'm not, I don't want this to be like broadcasted signage, dog boarding, because this is still a private home. So, so that's the communication, I would say, that was done since the last hearing.
Okay, great. And one of the neighbors had spoken about a fence door being installed. Are you aware of that, or can you provide any detail on what, what happened with that?
Would Nick be able to answer that because he is the owner of that property? He's the...
I'm the husband.
Oh, okay.
But, so I have a surveyor coming, he's in preparation for selling the house. The Leafwood Drive cul-de-sac property pin was removed by Michelle right before we bought or at some point before we bought. And she told us it was in her grass, so she removed it because it was in her grass. So to sell the house, I have to get a survey done and put that pin back in the ground at this point. So while the surveyor's there, he's going to survey the back fence, because there's two fences on the back. There's a wood fence, and then three feet away from it, there's a chain link fence. And they both parallel each other across the back. More of the property pins are outside the chain link fence, meaning more of the chain link fence is in ours. The only one that changes side of the chain link fence is on Michelle's side of the property. So basically, I'm gonna have a surveyor survey it next week or two. And if there's a dispute on the survey, then it will follow the county surveyor process, which goes to the county surveyor versus the zoning board. But we'll work out the property dispute if there's one with the county surveyors.
Okay.
After the surveyor's done.
So I think they'd said there was a door, though, of some sort that was installed? Is that correct?
There was a gate put on the chain link fence, because he had asked me to maintain a bush that was growing onto the wood fence.
Okay.
So in order to maintain that bush that was growing on the wood fence, I had to get back there to trim off the bush and keep the bush trimmed and everything. So we did, when we had the wood fence replaced with the newer wood fence, we did have a gate put in the chain link fence.
Okay.
And the surveyor's gonna confirm where that gate exactly, exactly right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
One follow-up question on that. Is that, are you using that interior area as a dog run?
No, the three feet strip between the wood fence and the chain link fence is only being accessed for maintenance of the bushes. So no dogs are allowed in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Is this, for your husband, is this a platted subdivision to your knowledge that your, your lot is in?
I'm not a surveyor, I believe it is.
Is it a subdivision? Do you have like a monument at the front? Is it, is it a subdivision?
There's no concrete monument. There is metal rebar stakes. I have found four of those, missing one. So the surveyor's gonna install the one that's missing at the Leafwood Drive cul-de-sac.
And you say you are a surveyor as well?
No, I'm not.
No, you're not? Okay.
Not a surveyor. There's not a concrete monument like you see a right-of-way monument. I don't see any of those, just concrete, just rebar pins.
It's my understanding, and we have a realtor up here, but it's my understanding that surveys are not absolutely required anymore to accomplish the sale of property?
Right, but everything's going on. Prior to last week, neighbor Gilmore behind me had a tree removed, tree was removed. All those tree guys damaged the chain link fence. He had offered to pay for the repair and damage to that chain link fence. I declined at that point. So the letter last week is the first time I'm finding out that he claimed ownership of both the wood fence and the chain link fence. So I'm gonna allow the surveyors to distinguish ownership of the fences and reassemble the property pin that was removed, so I can go to the buyer that ends up buying the house from us to be clear, hey, here's where your boundaries are. The pin's been put back that was removed, so.
Okay, thank you.
And as the subject matter expert in real estate, I will confirm Commissioner Blowing, a survey is not required for conveyance of property.
We don't have any further questions, so don't confuse you. Is there anyone else on the board that would like to call anybody forward? Okay, at the, at this time then, I'd like to make a motion. Considering all the testimony that's been offered at our last meeting and today, under the totality of that testimony, I, I believe that this business is not appropriate for the subdivision from the perspective of its unsuitability, impact upon the neighbors, and safety. This is, a kennel, a kennel is not appropriate for a subdivision, and that's obviously what this application is and what the testimony has been about. The application asks for seven days, 24-hour-a-day operation. It's obvious that subdivision property is being utilized for the purposes of training a personal business. I appreciate the applicant has a, a calling, you know, and a zeal for serving dogs, and perhaps that, that she's going to find a better place in order to carry out that calling. I have concerns about the overnight boarding and the use of the neighborhood streets to train dogs, the safety of individuals on those streets. And I also appreciate the ECCA's concern that it would set a negative precedent to approve this. And with all that being said, my motion is to deny the temporary land use permit and to recommend to the board that they consider giving an appropriate period of time, perhaps 60 days, for her to wrap up her operations.
Second?
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Blown. Discussion, any discussion? Okay, call the question. All right, the vote passes 5-0 to deny LUP 31.
Okay, and next case is LDP 33. Carol J. Hicks Vargas, Michael Vargas, requests a temporary land use permit to allow more adults and more vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot 80 of the 16th District. The property is located on the southwest side of Rocky Top Court, north of Watkins Glen Drive. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 33? The director show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward, be sworn in?
Please state your name for the record, and you can begin your discussion.
Carol Hicks Vargas. And what else did you say? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I was just saying you can begin, you can go ahead and begin.
Oh, okay. I didn't have to do this last time for the renewal, so.
Okay.
I own my home. I've owned my home for almost 20 years. I have six children. My three youngest are special needs. So we have a home that has two primary bedrooms. The one downstairs, my adult son and his wife are in as secondary caregivers. My husband and I share a bedroom, and the other three children have each of their own bedrooms. Just to give a little information, I was here last week, or last month for the renewal. My husband had a heart attack in the middle of the appointment. So I'm four weeks past for my husband having a major heart attack. My youngest is the one who has the major medical needs. She's currently in the hospital. She had sepsis on Thursday, and as I was thinking it wasn't too bad, I didn't need to call 911, I had to end up going to the side of the road and perform CPR on her until the paramedics got there. And so rather than being at the hospital where I'm waiting for the doctors to finish everything today, I'm, I'm here. So I do know how important this is to do that. I think on my application, as many neighbors as I could reach and get, I mean, we were leaving the form on my porch because I am gone so much. And my neighbors are amazing. It's not just my neighbors in my housing tract. We are a two-section housing tract with the freeway between. I have people coming from the secondary housing tract to come over to sign because they're all supportive, they understand our situation. We're the ones with the ambulances at our house quite often. They're used to that, they understand that, and they know all of what's, what's going on. So pretty much, that's my family in a nutshell.
All right, thank you very much. You may want to just stay up there. We don't have any opposition to this case, but I'll turn it over to Commissioner Dance to lead our discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. And so your request is for what?
Because we have a five-bedroom home and we have seven people. We have seven adults.
Okay, and if you could...
And so our permit has been for seven adults in, in the home and up to six cars.
And you've, and you've had that for how long?
The initial was agreed, two years happened. That was in, I'm two years in.
So you've been...
So this is my third time.
Okay, okay, okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Peterson, can you kind of summarize where we are on this?
Yes, she has come in twice before, Commissioner Dance. Her first approval was in 2022 for 12 months. Then she came back in and the board approved her in 2023 for 24 months. So now she's asking for seven related adults and seven cars on this property. And the staff had recommended it be approved.
For how many months?
24 months.
Okay. Okay. And there's no opposition?
No.
Or no complaints, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
You can go ahead and be seated. Thank you so much.
Okay, can I have Code Enforcement come forward?
Good afternoon, you're Lisa Fawcett, Cal County Code Enforcement.
Hey. Do you have any background on, on this property for us?
Yes. We had a case open since 2022 for single-family dwelling, too many vehicles. A notice of violation was issued for single-family dwelling, and in 2023, zoning stipulations was established and is stated that they can have a maximum of seven related adults in a house, allow a maximum of five vehicles, all cars are, must be parked in a driveway, no parking on the street. Recently, we did an early morning inspection, and they are in violation of the zoning stipulations. It was noticed that they, most of the days, they do park on the street, and then they, that's daily, and then they also have six vehicles, and according to the stipulations, they're only allowed to have five vehicles. And we held off on issuing a citation due to this pending hearing.
Okay, so the, what you noticed were too many vehicles?
They, they are allowed five, and no parking on the street, and they have six mostly every day and park on the street.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And so if I could have the applicant come back forward?
I have five cars. I don't know what the sixth car is.
Okay.
And they're in the driveway. So, because I'm, I'm sitting here counting right now. I have a car, my husband has a vehicle, and my 20-year-old, 24-year-old has a car, and then my son and my daughter-in-law, that's five cars. So I'm not sure what the sixth car, I'm not sure what she's talking about.
Okay. I mean, maybe you had a visitor at some time or another, but...
I have nurses coming at all times, but they park wherever. I can't tell them, don't park on the street. Sometime they park in the driveway, sometime they park in the street. They're not mine, but are there six cars registered to my house? Because I only have five.
No, that would have just been what somebody observed.
Oh, they just drive by and say, hey, there's cars parked out. Well, oh, well, I don't know, I mean...
So what you have...
Neighbors can park in front of my house. I mean, I don't...
Okay, but what you have is five being...
Five cars. I only have five. I have five...
And you're not, you don't have a problem parking them in the drive?
Oh, no. I have a crazy weird driveway that goes the full length, and you could fit...
Okay.
A ton of cars on there. We don't have an issue with that. And at the end, it's like three plus, three and a half cars wide at the end of the driveway. So, yeah, I, I, I mean, if...
Okay.
I mean, I want to be in compliance. We work really hard to make sure that we stay in compliance, so I'm not sure what that is.
Okay, all right. Okay. Anybody else have follow-up? Thank you.
Okay.
I just may, I make a motion to, to approve.
Second? All right, we have a second from Commissioner Massey. Any discussion? Yes? Yes. Any additional consent discussion?
Twenty-four months.
For 24 months, yes. And to my knowledge, we're just talking about putting it on the consent agenda. And Commissioner Anderson, you had a question?
And it's subject to the staff recommendations?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Call the question. Okay, and it passes 5 to 0 to approve LUP 33 and to be put on the consent agenda. Okay, and it passes five to zero to approve LUP thirty-three and to be put on the consent agenda.
All right. Next case is rezoning case Z nineteen, Brockbuilt Homes LLC. Request rezoning from R twenty and R thirty to R twenty for a residential subdivision in Land Lots two forty-three and two seventy-six of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the east side of Friendship Church Road, south of Villa Rica Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z nineteen? Three. Hey, let the record show there's three people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board for or against, please come forward. We've sworn in.
Good morning again.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Thank you. Kevin Moore here, on behalf of the applicant and owners of the applicant's Brockbuilt Homes in this application for rezoning. This tract, you see on your screen, is located on Friendship Church Road, just south of its intersection with Villa Rica. This property is actually, almost eight and a half acres of the property is already zoned R twenty. There's a small portion that's just under three acres that is zoned R thirty. And what we're doing is proposing for the tract in its entirety to be zoned R twenty. So that's the rezoning request. That's why you see this R twenty and R thirty to R twenties, because we have a small portion that's already zoned, that is zoned R thirty, and we'd like to have a small subdivision of fine Brockbuilt Homes that are under a single zoning category. And we're going to turn now to the site plan, and I'll kind of be able to show you that in a little bit better, more detailed-type fashion. Okay, now back to the site plan. This is Friendship Church Road. To highlight it for you, this portion of the tract is already zoned R twenty. It was zoned R twenty, I believe, back in two thousand and six timeframe. So it's about many years ago. It was rezoned to R twenty. That would be, and it was for a fourteen-home subdivision. So this is already entitled for R twenty, half acre, minimum half-acre lots, subdivision in an area that's dominated by, as you can see, by the adjoining zonings and development along Friendship Church. This particular area in West Cobb has been developed as R twenty, as it should be. We are proposing to add this almost three-acre tract to it. This property belongs to the church that's located here. It's additional property that they do not need. It's just excess property that they do not need. We can add it into our property here and then create a subdivision of eighteen homes instead of fourteen homes. Just by way of doing math as well, this was noted in your staff report. If we did nothing, if you just use the math of the fourteen plus the two-point-nine-acre tract of R thirty, you could get something around seventeen units. That's what staff calculated by using the math. So we're requesting eighteen total homes to have it all zoned R twenty. But again, that would make it very consistent and allow for eighteen R twenty homes and lots to be developed and built by Brockbuilt Homes here. The, again, it takes longer to explain than it really should, because this is fairly straightforward. This property can be assembled in this way with the existing tract that's already R twenty. We can add the small piece from the church, make, you know, a better subdivision of eighteen homes. These will be nice homes from Brockbuilt in an area where it's dominated by R twenty subdivisions that are much larger, as a matter of fact. We have brought this forward for your consideration. There are no requested variances, and I want to make sure that was highlighted for your consideration. There are no variance requests whatsoever. We are in agreement with all of staff's recommendations and comments of each department. We do have a zoning condition stipulation letter that would marry what you would typically see in this situation. We're certainly happy to speak and work with anybody. I see that there is a couple of here in opposition. We're happy to address any issues that they may have and be happy to do so at the appropriate time. With that, we respect the request that this planning commission follow your staff's recommendation for approval and respect the request approval to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have opposition. I believe you've been sworn in. If you could go ahead and make your way up to the podium, state your name for the record, and you can go ahead and give your testimony.
Good morning. My name's David Smith. I live, my property abuts about two hundred and seventy-five feet along this Brockbuilt property on the south side. Gentlemen's correct, this has been previously approved for R twenty, but what he's admitting was the drainage for this property. It was previously approved to have the drainage come down Friendship Church Road and tie into the existing drain structure. What they put on their applications, they're proposing to put this detention pond on the south side and drain it into my backyard. There is no natural stream or anything back there. It's a low-lying area. It does gather a little water. But what they're proposing is putting a detention pond in there. It's got about thirty-five thousand gallons it can hold, and we're along the back of the property line to drop sheet water across it. What that's going to end up doing is going to compromise the structure of my property and my neighbor's property. So they're trying to do an end-to-round on, you're trying to say, just to approve the zoning. Well, the drainage is part of the zoning. So not only will it increase the volume due to the hardscape that they're putting in, the roads, the roofs, and whatever gets built over there, it's also stormwater. So whatever's going to be in it, oil, pesticides, whatever gets dumped in the road over there would collect, and just settle in my backyard, it would turn into a sediment pond. So for those reasons, I recommend you not approve any changes to this, because they've already went to the water board and tried to work some numbers. And they were supposed to give me this report two, three weeks ago, and they said, oh, well, I allowed them to do a survey on my property to assess the water situation. I said, all right, come on, we get a little bit of water, come over here and assess it, give me a good report, or at least a complete report on this. They came back with, we can change the rate. Okay, so you're pouring a five-gallon bucket into a test tube. The rate doesn't matter. You're going to flood all these properties. So you need to spend the money to tie it in right to the storm drain system, be a good neighbor, and that way, any detention ponds or anything you put back there, it all flows to the right area and doesn't damage all the neighboring properties. Because it could not only flood mine, flood the people next to me, the guy across the street. We're already getting some runoff from the subdivision going across the street on Friendship Church. It's, the county has violated and red-flagged this guy so many times, it's not even funny, because he can't seem to get his drainage right. It's still pouring over, coming down Chatsworth Way. So I recommend you stop all this until they work out something acceptable with all the adjacent property owners on the stormwater. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the opposition would like to come up? You can go ahead and come up. State your name.
Good morning. Travis McCombe, Cobb County School District. Approval of this petition would cause concern as it will result in an impact on the enrollment of one school already over capacity. Hill Grove is already over capacity, seventy students, and we recently had a thirteen-classroom addition in May of 2023. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any additional opposition speaking at this time? All right. This is in District One. So Commissioner Blowing, you take the lead, please.
Thank you. Let me start with, working back, let me start with Mr. McCombe, if I could, from the school board. So in conjunction with some other questions up around Kennesaw State regarding housing needs up there, we have heard that there's going to be like a reduction in the number of students of senior year of high school age coming up in the next year or two. Do you know anything about that or kind of trends in that area in terms of the demographics? Do you have a handle on that at this time, or is that something maybe you could look into for us?
I can look into it, but I'm not aware of any reduction of seniors. I know we have, coming up next school year, we have Ceta Two opening. So I'm not sure if that's in correlation with the reduction of seniors, but I'm unaware of any reduction of seniors.
Does the school board publish annual, and I apologize for not looking at your website about this lately, but does the school board publish annual data regarding the enrollment at each one of these schools?
We do every year. We have the forty-five-day report. That should be available around beginning to mid-November for this school year.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions of Mr. McCombe? Otherwise, I'll keep moving along. All right, let me go to Mr. Heath, if I could.
Hello, Andrew Heath, Cobb County Stormwater Management.
Thank you, Andrew. And I noticed you had some somewhat atypical comments regarding stormwater in conjunction with this property. Is that fair?
Yeah, there, I tried to be a little detailed with them. I don't know exactly how unusual they are, but I tried to at least lay out, you know, the issues that I could see on the property.
Okay. Can you start with the most, the issues of highest concern regarding stormwater?
Yeah. Do you have, you have. If you can just put his site plan up there. Oh, there you go. Okay. Yeah, so this site plan, for the drainage for this site, I guess one thing, a general thing, that kind of permeates through a lot of the comments that I've got are that it's, the terrain is, excuse me, the terrain is very rolling. So the water wants to leave the site now in the existing condition at different locations. And so that always makes managing that runoff, you know, a challenge, because in order to manage the runoff, you've got to be able to contain it, get it to one of the systems on-site in order to be able to control those flow rates off-site. And then where the water is leaving the site, that creates some additional challenges where, where the water, there may be water leaving the site now at a certain location, but when you add a detention pond there, you change the runoff characteristics from the site. Potentially, the folks downstream might not see an increase in the overall rate of runoff. But the way any detention system would work is, it's, once the site's developed, the water leaves the developed areas of the site, the streets, the homes, driveways, more quickly than it does. And the developed condition runs into the detention pond, fills it up, but the detention pond is metering that flow out. So it's releasing that flow over a longer period of time. So although that may not increase the flow rates onto the neighbors, if water maybe drains onto their property for an extended period of time or something like that, that can be something that the neighbors might not appreciate, you could understand. So that might require, you know, working with the neighbors to connect pipe systems from detention ponds to overall, try to capture the drainage on the lots and get it to the detention pond and not allow it to bypass off where it's not wanting to go. So I've given the applicant some ideas, you know, to consider there. I heard one member of the opposition who spoke in that said that the applicant has been out in the field and has been doing some survey work. And actually, the applicant had reached out to me and left me a phone message and an email about that, probably concerning a lot of the work that they were doing in the field. And I haven't followed up with them on that yet. But I suspect that what they're trying to do is to measure that, survey that, and try to get a handle on that so they can develop, you know, a good plan going forward.
Okay. Have you received the August twenty, twenty twenty-five Gaskins-Lacraux letter to Mr. Smith?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. So it sounds like this is something we should probably get to you and let you evaluate so we can try to work through these issues to try to avoid any harm to Mr. Smith. Other than Mr. Smith, are there any property owners adjoining or downstream as to whom you have concerns that we need to address?
Not other than what just mentioned in my comments, I think.
Okay. Because you mentioned something about rolling topography, and it doesn't necessarily want to leave the property in one location. So what other locations will it tend to exit, assuming there's not some massive amount of mass grading going on here?
Right. And I think it was specifically the area of the lots, if I recall, I think it was lots number three through seven, if I recall, where just the way those lots would be graded, it might be likely that the rear of those lots could drain away unless some attention is paid to how to get that to the detention system. That was one particular area that I recall. But yeah, I would definitely be glad to reach out. Actually, and I saw the engineer and the applicant just earlier before the meeting, so I definitely would like to get that letter and meet with them, and then we can, you know, work toward solving all those issues.
Okay. Obviously, pass the witness, but that's not the right thing to say. So if anybody else has questions of Mr. Heath.
Mr. Heath, the only question that I have, you spoke about overtime. Can you clarify what that overtime looks like? What is that in numbers?
Right. So the, when the runoff is going to quickly fill the detention ponds, and they're sized to capture that, but the outlet is sized to release it only at that predeveloped rate. So there's a time after the, normally, if I were downstream, when the rain stopped, within just a few minutes, probably the water's going to stop flowing, because now there's no more source of water, although I would have seen a higher flow rate. But the pond is releasing that water at a controlled rate, at a low rate. And so it's going to take longer for that to drain, kind of like if you had a bathtub and you didn't quite let it fully drain, it's going to take longer for that to drain. How long is variable? It all depends on the site, how much water it is, how fast it can be released, and a bunch of variables. But, you know, it's not uncommon that it might last for perhaps like a couple of hours after a rainfall event. And so if I were the homeowner downstream and I saw the rain pretty much ends within maybe, the rain, I'm sorry, the runoff ends within maybe ten, fifteen minutes after it stops raining now, but it continued for maybe a couple of hours later, that could be objectionable. So there's some different ways that we could look at, try to address that, and that's one thing we want to talk to the applicant about.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I had. Mr. Peterson, can you tell us what other issues we should look at over the next little period of time here? Any other major issues identified by staff that we should zero in on?
You know, by way of how the opposition testified, it looked like the number one issue would be how they route stormwater management. And, you know, I did check the previous zoning from two thousand and six, and there was an agreement to route it down the right of Friendship Church Road to kind of route it around the properties from the subdivision to the south. I don't see the name of it right now. But it looks like all the conditions were kind of geared towards getting stormwater off those properties and routing them down the right of the road.
Is that information, it's already been posted on this case?
No, it's not. It's in the previous case.
Is that something you can share with everybody here on this board?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Let me just get the applicant for a minute. So I appreciate the Gaskins-Lacraux letter that I received, and this is something where you folks will be open to my going ahead and forwarding questions to you. Would you prefer I forward any questions I have to you after reviewing this further?
Sure, I would, just so I can be in the loop and make sure it's directed and responded to and close the loop if there's an open question. I think for today's purposes, just for a thought for you, it seems like Mr. Smith was looking at having, he's interested in having the detention pond discharge for where his property is adjacent, that be piped to the street and then down Friendship Church Road, which was a zoning condition from two thousand and six. We'd had, I was in a part of those discussions that had gone on with the engineer, Mr. Smith, previously. But we're agreeable to keeping those conditions in place.
Okay.
Which would, to me, that addresses that altogether. I think there were some different ways to look at it, but I think his point is well-taken, and that is, there's an existing solution, that is, just pipe it down the street as opposed to having that discharge onto his property at all, where it does now. It just takes it away.
Well, while you're here, then, can you go ahead and? Well, while you're here then, can you go ahead and explain the import of the Gaskins-Lacraux letter of August twenty relative to the solution that you say is already encompassed in this prior agreement?
Right, I think the Gaskins-Lacraux, that's the engineering firm letter, was a result of a meeting, and then subsequently, the engineering firm providing that information to Mr. Smith for his consideration as a way also to address, in part, the existing drainage and issues that his property has. Because that's where this property, the subject property drains, in part, towards and onto Mr. Smith's property now. That's what he was explaining. I think they were trying to provide us some numbers and some analysis around that. But from our standpoint, from my standpoint, Rockville's home standpoint, if that's not agreeable, and Mr. Smith has expressed that he's not agreeable to that, then we're happy to do the piping.
Okay, so can you get a copy of this letter to Mr. Heath or in the file, the Gaskins-Lacraux letter?
Yeah, we're happy to, but again, that's addressing a situation of if you're going to have the detention discharge where it does today onto Mr. Smith's property as opposed to
Piped.
A pipe to the street, because it's adjacent to the street. And if I want to point it so others can understand, though you've looked at it, being the area commissioner, planning commissioner, if I could, it would help everybody understand a little bit.
Certainly.
So for everybody's benefit, Friendship Church Road, this is the detention pond we keep referencing, is here. And then this is Mr. Smith's home and property here. Currently undeveloped, portions of this property drain out onto Mr. Smith's property. It's not managed, and so there is an issue, as he described it, there's an issue that occurs. The discussions that had taken place with our engineers and Mr. Smith on-site, some of that work and analysis that was provided was to manage that and reduce that impact to him. Mr. Smith, though, has expressed that that's not something he's agreeable to. This is Friendship Church Road, this is the detention pond. That prior stipulation that Mr. Peterson referenced would take it, we just pipe directly from the pond, and you pipe it down Friendship Church Road. And then there's a place further down Friendship Church Road, actually at the, where this next subdivision is that Mr. Smith's in, where it can connect as part of the overall stormwater system. That would also, we'd have to do some downstream evaluation, which is typical of permitting an LDP review to provide those numbers, and if necessary, have to upgrade it. But all of those aren't on people's properties there, in the, you know, in streets and inlets and things like that. So that's what we're proposing, is to have that condition be a part of this proposal.
So you're saying that solution would require some further downstream studies? Is that your understanding?
Yes, anytime you're tied into an existing system, one of the standard recommendations from Cobb Stormwater is that those downstream systems be evaluated and upgraded if necessary. And that's in every, it's in every zoning analysis, I'll put it that way.
Standard language for a subdivision.
For any development.
Right, okay.
Correct.
Are there any easements you need to affect the solution you're talking about in terms of piping?
No, it's all in the right-of-way, with existing, where you would tie it in with existing stormwater, in the right-of-way.
All right, and if anyone else has questions to the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to.
There you go.
One question, not related to stormwater, but just, and it might be in the stipulation letter. But will this be a for-sale community?
Yes.
Okay, and so I might have just missed any kind of restriction on.
I don't typically put, you know, these are half-acre lots and seven, eight hundred thousand dollar homes, we don't typically say there's a restriction on leasing them for something like this, because it's just not a, that's not where it occurs. You don't have investors buying seven hundred thousand dollar houses at great lengths to do this, and there's only eighteen of them.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not opposed to it other than on principle.
The rental cap, I think we've generally seen mostly typically a ten percent threshold.
Sometimes on townhome developments, things like that, yes, we have. We haven't done it by standard or anything else when you have larger lot subdivisions, just.
Okay, yeah.
Because here, eighteen homes, was that one or two you're limiting to? I mean, I just.
Yeah, I know there's also.
If it's a concern, you can obviously put that on there.
I figured since there's, going through the effort of HOA and, you know, other kind of restrictions and conditions, it probably rises to the same thing as an architectural review board or other mechanisms.
Right, I just in principle try to steer away from the government imposing encumbrances on private property whenever possible.
Okay, understood. All right, thank you.
Thank you. If I could get Mr. Smith for just a minute?
Thank you.
Okay, so you wrote to Mr. Peterson and forwarded to him the letter from Gaskins-Lacraux, which you didn't find to your liking, I'll paraphrase. Is that fair?
Yes, I don't think he, he talks about great natural flow, you know, streams and all this kind of stuff. There's no stream in my side yard. There's no, it's a sodded side yard, it's fenced. My neighbor's fence is there, so there's not natural waterways, so it's the, the report doesn't talk anything about the duration. I mean, it's going to turn it into a swamp if you're sitting there draining water all the time. He says, "Three to six garden hoses, for how long?" I mean, you're trying to drain over two swimming pools worth of water. That's if the detention pond is full. And who knows, there's more water coming in there. That doesn't mean that that's all the water's going to be in there. So, and you also could be pulling water from across the street, which they don't mention, and the quality of the water, so it's going to be, it's going to be a sediment area, and eventually it'll just kill all the trees, because right now it's kind of a natural area just behind my forward fence there. And I think it'll just kill all the vegetation. It'll be so wet, it'll just kill, you know, run risk of trees being blown over. Also, over time, you got all those pesticides and everything that just settle in there, it's going to become, could become a cleanup site. So I think they've got options here. They're just don't, they're just looking for something cheap to do, I think.
Well, do you have thoughts specifically about the piping option that Kevin just addressed? Do you have any thoughts about that?
You know, I'm not, I'm not totally, I mean, it's going to work fine. It's going to be a major inconvenience to the subdivision because they're going to come down the right-of-way and go across the street, tie in. But it's fine, it'll be a long-term solution, it'll be done once. Hopefully, they'll knock it out in, you know, a quick amount of time. Still a little curious why the sanitary sewer from all these houses is going the other way, and yet the stormwater, half of us coming, or more than half is coming toward us, and then the other half is going the other way, so it's kind of odd. I thought it rolls downhill the same way, but, okay. But I think we're fine with it coming down and properly tying into subdivision. You know, as long as the stormwater stays stormwater, don't dump it on me and then expect it just to go somewhere. If anybody's got a low-lying area in your lot or next year in your neighbor's lot and says, "Hey, we want to put a detention pond, it's going to drain right there." And they can't go anywhere because that low spot is higher than the street, so it's just going to stay there, stay wet, it's going to soften up the soil. My neighbor's got a garage over there, his house is probably a little closer to this area than mine. That water could even flow into my crawl space, because I've got a crawl space on that side. So if the water gets any higher, it's going to go in there. So you're going to compromise all the houses over there unless you run it the correct way and run it down the side, tie it in properly in the county system.
That's all I had for Mr. Smith, unless anyone else has questions? Okay, thank you, you can have a seat. My motion at this time is that we hold this till next month, just to make sure that we've carefully reviewed what's been submitted and act prudently.
Do we have a second?
Second, for the purposes of discussion, just to make a comment. I'd also like to see a mitigation plan the next time we come, just based on what you discussed.
Okay, we have a, excuse me, a second from Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? All right, call the question. Okay, and the vote passes five to zero to hold Z nineteen to next month's hearing. All right, we are at that fork in the road of lunch for two additional cases. I think we're going to push through. I think we're going to push through if that's okay. Let's push through. Let's just do a quick three-minute break.
Okay.
Three-minute break, five-minute break, okay, I try to give a five-minute break, come back, push through those cases, and then we'll be done for the rest of the day, okay? All right, thank you, we are back from break. We'll go ahead with our next case.
Okay, next case is LDP thirty-four, Jose Orellana. Request a temporary drainage permit to allow more adults and vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot sixteen of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the southeast intersection of Birchwood Road and Walnut Circle. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LDP thirty-four? We got two opposed? Okay, the director show there's two people here opposed. All those who want to address the board either for or against, please come forward, we've sworn in.
All right, hi, please state your name for the record, and you can begin.
Good morning, my name is Jose Orellana. I got my interpreter, my son, he's brilliant, I'm going to speak English, good.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
I am Jesus Orellana, I'm his son, and I'm not really a good translator, but I'll try my best for y'all today.
Okay, thank you very much.
He said he wants to renew the permission for the five cars, but, yeah. Okay, so for him, in his case, he's got like, he's got like four, like children that he, that are his, basically. So it's me, my brother, my two brothers, and then my sister. So that's like four people related in the household. And I know I'm pretty nervous, I'm not used to this, but, you know, he's like pushing seventy, and he's kind of old, so, you know, I respect him, sorry. I respect him because he's taking care of his children, and he's still letting us live with him, even though times are tough, and like the economy and everything, it's like really rough at the moment. And it doesn't help that he's had like heart surgery in the last year, and then my mom's also, sorry. My mom's also been in a really bad accident last year, so it kind of hurts me financially to have to like support both of them, and I know that I'm not in a very good place to be able to do that. And then I also had my car accident last year, so there's that. And then they've had like a divorce like a while ago, so, you know, it's hard to balance his life and that life. It's a struggle on the kids, I'm sorry. But I'm here to help him out, because, you know, he helps us out, so I just wanted to speak on behalf of him.
Thank you, thank you for that, thank you for that. Any additional comments you want to share about just the application in general? This is definitely your time to do that.
I'm not really like a speaker, but I might want to have some points here.
Okay, sure.
So I get that it says like a single-family dwelling, and families come in all shapes and sizes. Mine is obviously split and a little bigger than most. So I get that, you know, it doesn't fit the definition of a nuclear family. And I do feel like some of these laws and like regulations do kind of mirror, like back in the day when they did redlining, where it kind of like targets minority, minority groups. I know, my voice is shaking, he's saying that too. But, you know, it sort of targets minority groups because, you know, they're the ones financially struggling the most. And, you know, it just, to me, it sort of feels like that, just because I'm not financially stable, neither is he, you know? I'm sorry. I think that's all I have to say. I don't think he has anything to say for himself. He's waiting for you guys, if you guys want to say something.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. You can go ahead and have a seat, and we'll hear from the opposition, and you may be called up later. But you can go ahead and have a seat, thank you for that. Hi ma'am, please state your name for the record and.
Good morning, my name is Nina Player. I live in Birchwood Park subdivision. And I've been in the subdivision approximately thirty years. And my main reason for being here this morning is, two weeks ago, there was an accident right on the corner of Birchwood and Walnut Lane, that tied up traffic, the police were there. And about two years ago, there was an automobile accident there. And you're talking about a residential neighborhood where the speed limit's twenty-five miles an hour, so how was there an accident? Well, on the corner, if there's a house that has five vehicles parked in the driveway, there's limited sight distance down Birchwood Road. Now Birchwood Road connects Favor to Hicks. And on Favor, you've got Osborne High School, there's a bunch of apartment complexes. And when Hicks gets backed up, because it empties into Alstel Road, people cut through Birchwood Road, and they cut through, not doing the speed limit, they're going pretty fast down the street. So that's how there are accidents on the corner. And if there are five cars parked in the driveway, and there are not always five cars, sometimes there's a panel truck with no windows, so you can't see. Even when you're walking, you can't see around the corner. So my main reason for being here is because of the safety concerns. The other thing, there's a bus stop on that corner, directly across from the house. So in the morning and in the evening, when children are getting off of the bus or boarding the bus, you've got people going to Osborne, people going to the Innovation Center, speeding down the street, and if there are so many cars parked there, we're going to have more accidents in the neighborhood. The other thing is, it's a residential neighborhood, it's a single-family dwelling. I understand that in today's world, there are circumstances where you have extended family living with you. I can appreciate that. These homes were primarily built as single-family dwellings. We do have basements, and sometimes there's a tendency to have extended family in the basement living, which adds to the overall footprint of the house. And then residents have a tendency to add more unrelated people. I don't know that that's a fact, but it could happen. I think that allowing additional cars also sets a precedent in the neighborhood because then other neighbors see this happening, and it's like, well, they've got five cars, trucks parked. I should be able to do it too. I should be able to park cars on my grass. I should be able to park cars on the street. We have no sidewalks. So when we're walking the neighborhood, we also find that you can't even see around the cars because of all the cars in the driveway. So besides the limited sight distance, the fact that there's a school bus and there are children getting off the bus and on the bus, a lot of times what happens when the bus comes, parents park along the street to pick up their kids, which also impedes traffic flow. So I think that, you know, based on being a homeowner for the past thirty years in the neighborhood, there ought to be other options when families have to have either their extended family stay, they have multiple cars, multiple vehicles, work vehicles, trucks. they have multiple cars, multiple vehicles, work vehicles, trucks, friends and family come to visit, and they park on the street. So I respectfully ask that you deny this request for the safety of the residents in the neighborhood, and specifically for the safety of the children that have to board a bus on that corner that's directly across from this house. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, this is in District 4. We'll turn over to Commissioner Massey to lead our discussion.
Thank you. Can I have the applicant up, please? I'll apologize in advance. I'm gonna play a little bit of ping pong with you, but I have a couple of questions, and I want to hear from Code Enforcement. Can you tell me who's living in the home, and their ages, and also the number of cars and who drives them?
Five peoples.
Five people?
My four sons and me, and five cars, you know, everybody working. This guy and those two people working tonight. And they're coming late all tonight. The cars stay all day in my house. But as soon as the guy they saw, he sees too many cars. Because all the guys, some people working the days, and people at night. Men are working right now. I've got a surgery in my chest, you know? But so I need a permit for five cars.
Got you. So the number of people in the house, name them for me, please, and their ages. Let's start with that.
Oh, my daughter is 28, 26, 24, 22. All is adult people, you know?
28, 26, 22, and...
That's our four sons.
Okay, and then you and who else? There's a total of five people in the house, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and how many vehicles are there?
Five.
Five vehicles, okay. All right, if you will have a seat for me, let me call up Code Enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. Yo Lisa Forson, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Yes, Yo Lisa, can you please speak to, excuse me, this property, this parcel? Tell us what Code Enforcement has experience with this particular property.
We, well, it started with the LUP being denied for too many vehicles. That was on July 19th of 2022. And they were given six months to come into compliance with the code, which was they're allowed to have two adults and two vehicles at the property. We conducted a few early morning inspections, and currently the property continuously has five to six vehicles. A citation was issued July 2nd for a single-family dwelling. The court date was scheduled for July 24th, and the property owner failed to appear in court. And right now, we're waiting for the court to reschedule the court date. This property has been in violation since 2020. We've continuously received complaints of too many people at the property.
Okay. Does any of the fellow commissioners have questions or concerns?
Regarding the too many people at the property, anybody other than the children of the owner, to your knowledge?
I can't answer that question because we, when we issue a notice of violation for a single-family dwelling, we attach an occupancy statement to it for the applicant, excuse me, the applicant to fill out. And we legally cannot force them to fill it out and let us know who is at the property. The only thing we can do is monitor vehicles at the property and take a guess from the amount of vehicles that are at the property, how many adults are at the property.
And what was the highest number of vehicles you observed at the property?
Six.
Six, okay. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions for my fellow commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any further comments or questions or concerns for my fellow commissioners?
Yeah, just that, you know, what I've heard, and what I don't know, is whether five cars can be stacked somewhere, either in a garage or carport or whatever's there, without being in the road. But, you know, there's been a very legitimate concern expressed about the importance of keeping cars from being parked on Birchwood Road. I don't know, is that something that we have within our rights to require that, to the extent any considerations given that they keep cars off of, from being parked on Birchwood?
Sure, you know, and the board typically through DOT comments can restrict cars from parking in a right-of-way as part of an approved law.
Thank you. And then just the other thing, I didn't hear any evidence that this was anything but the children of the owner of the property, so, you know, I guess we didn't really inquire into the mother's situation. It sounds like she's not there anymore, so I don't know if there are any options there or not. But I mean, I have a certain amount of empathy for the fact you have related children living there.
Any other further comments or...?
Yeah, I was just wanna, and maybe I missed this earlier, but just from a clarity perspective. And I think you were saying that, Commissioner Blowing, but not necessarily parking on Birchwood, but more so, is there any carport or garage that the vehicles could be parked in? I don't know if we got that answered.
We did not.
Okay.
If the applicant can come forward, please, and answer that question.
There he is.
Yes.
So yes, the question really was around, is there a carport or a garage that the cars could be parked in?
I got a garage made for four cars. Yeah, yeah, I got it for maybe seven or eight cars, you know? So I got it parked in concrete.
So he's talking about the front, like on the top right over there? It's like, it's like a little driveway? Yeah, that's usually where they'll park like the four, the four or five cars. And if like my mom visits, six, right there. But if you're talking about like a garage, it's like a one-car garage, but he has like the basement used for storage, so he can't really park it in there.
Is that like the bolt door that's in the back of the basement? Is that what you're referring to as the garage door?
It's like on the left side, like towards Walnut Circle, yeah.
So the house itself has a space for a car to be parked in a garage, but it's being used for storage currently?
Yeah, it's used for storage.
Is there access to it from...?
From the road? No, you would have to like open the gate and then like go in. And I'm not, from what I know, I don't even think that the garage door opens. That's gonna be the front where we all park usually. And then, and...
Do you guys have a plan to, I know that you guys are a large family, and not to be insensitive to your family dynamic, but do you have any plans for any of the older children to move out at any point within the next little bit? I heard 28, 26, 22.
I think my older sister was trying to move out, but like I guess something happened with her and whoever she was going to move in with. I guess they got into an argument, I guess, you know?
Understood. Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, you guys can have a seat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I am ready to make a motion. I kind of am a little conflicted just because I hear the concerns of the neighborhood. I hear the concerns of making sure that our children stay safe with respect to their bus stops. And I also understand that Code Enforcement has done an amazing job of trying to impose compliance since 2020. I don't want to be insensitive to the family that, of the applicant that stood before us. So I'll submit this motion to approve LUP 34 for 12 months. They are with the following stipulations, that no cars are to be parked on the street or in any right-of-way at any point moving forward.
I'll second that, and then can we have a brief discussion?
Sure.
Would you consider adding some requirement that they create an area under that carport to actually store a vehicle there, to remove whatever is stored there presently? I think what I heard anyway was that there was something stored there now, but that they actually start using the carport to store at least one car?
I will absolutely amend my motion to include that, yes.
Thank you.
So I will amend my motion to approve LUP 34 for 12 months, allowing the five vehicles not to be parked in anywhere but on the driveway, no right-of-way, and no street parking, and also to clear out the garage space for parking a vehicle in the garage of the house.
Do we need to second for the purposes of discussion still, or we're still...? Oh, yeah, okay, so we're good. I'd recommend, I think we can go with, and John can confirm this for me, but as low as six months, and the only reason would be that it probably needs to be a longer-term solution, and there are some interventions, paving of driveways. Just, and just want to be respectful of the family here, but allowing them some time to maybe find some plans for maybe perhaps the adult children to, or maybe getting rid of some of the cars or finding some alternatives. But I think six, I personally'd be in favor of six months to be a kind of a medium where it allows a time for the family to engage in some of, I know they're difficult conversations, but there are certainly ones where you want to, I do think, find a path so that at least the house can become a little bit more compliant. And secondarily, just so that's respectful, so that, you know, the neighbors, you know, you're not really necessarily setting too much of a precedent. So I would argue six months probably balances that need to allow for maybe some financial circumstances to be adhered to or addressed, while still allowing the code, the spirit of the code to still be upheld. And John, can you confirm as well that six months is the minimum, or is it 12?
The only thing the code addresses is the maximum, which is 24 months. So the board commissioners can stipulate any timeframe up to 24 months.
Okay. Just my thoughts. Can you be taken or leaving? That's fine. I just wanted to share some of the thoughts on it.
Okay, we have additional discussion about six months. Do you want your motion to remain?
I'm comfortable with it remaining at 12.
All right, so we will, and we did have a second from Commissioner Blowing with that. So we'll go ahead, and any further discussion?
One question for Code Enforcement is... Thanks for coming back up. If we went with 12 months with the stipulation that there was to be no parking on, what's the name of the road? It's not up here anymore.
Birchwood.
Birchwood. And would that be something where you could check and observe whether any vehicles were parked in front of this house on Birchwood over the next several months?
We can place it back for early morning inspections, and we'll do a thorough inspection to see how many vehicles is at the property, to see if they are in violation of the stipulations that's established.
Is that something we need to make a motion about, or something you folks can just do?
You can add that in there.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll amend the motion to add in Code Enforcement monitoring of the subject property to ensure that they are in compliance with this particular request.
Second, and thank you.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Blowing. Any further discussion? All right, call the question. Okay, and the vote passes four to one. Commissioner Anderson opposed for approval of LUP 34.
Okay, next item on the agenda is LEP 35, C. Susan Velasquez. Request a temporary land use permit to allow a personal care home for up to 16 people in Land Law 210 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Hawkinsville Road, east of Bellis Ferry Road. Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 35? No? Okay, let the director show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward? We've sworn in.
All right, good afternoon. Could you please state your name for the record?
Susan, it's Carolyn Susan Velasquez.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm her husband, by the way, Eli Velasquez, but I let him talk.
Okay.
Today I'm having a hard time talking. I have COPD, and it's affecting me today. So if I can't talk, I'll relinquish to him, if that's okay.
That sounds great. Please just try to speak into the mic so that we can hear you as best we can. Yep, you have 10 minutes.
Oh, okay. Yes, we're trying to increase the amount of people for a personal care home from 10 to 16, if we could. And it's called Genesis, and it's on Hawkinsville Road in Kennesaw. And we've been there, what, 27, almost 28 years now.
Any additional information you'd like to share about your application? Any details you'd like to share, just to make sure that we, of course, we have the details in writing, but anything else you'd like to share, you'd like us to know?
I'm not sure. Like, it's a house, and it's a large house. It has 11 bedrooms. And we're trying to see if we can increase the number. And we are next to a church, and we're next to a school. And we got permission from most of the people that live around us for us, you know, to increase it. We don't have too many problems with our neighbors. They kind of like us, which is good because we've been there a long, long time. Anything else, Eli?
No, you're doing a good job.
With what little voice I have left.
Well, thank you very much. There was no opposition, is that correct? For this, okay. All right, this is, you can stay up there, I guess, for just a minute. This is in District 3, so Commissioner Dance is gonna lead our discussion on this, okay?
I'm just, sorry. I'm gonna ask you some questions so I can actually understand your application.
Okay.
So you were actually approved in last year for 24, right?
No, for 10.
Right, no.
Oh, in 2024.
2020, you were approved in 2024 for 10 folks. So what has happened since that time?
Well, we have more space, and what we want to do is try to sell it. When I had gotten sick, I always wanted to do what we've been doing for 27, almost 28 years. But when I got sick, it just was hard for me to, you know, work full-time. So we're gonna try to sell it, but we can't sell it unless we can get more people. Like, we had a contract for, I can't, firm foundation. But if we couldn't get between 16 to 22, nobody would want to buy it. And I just don't have the strength anymore to help my husband to run. It was always a mom-and-pop business, and we've loved it. But once I got sick, I'm sorry, I can't do it anymore.
Yeah, basically, you know, it's a ministry. It's a 501(c)(3) ministry, and it's from a church to a group home. And we've done that 27 years. And we've done that 27 years, and we've, we're very popular, I guess, in the community. Everybody knows us, and, and right now, we just feel like, I know we don't look old enough, but we look, we look, I mean, we, we're, we're, we're ready to move on, but we would like to, to be, to pass it on. And I think the people that have had more interest in it has been personal care homes. And I think the community, the church, and everybody else would be more comfortable with a, a personal care home.
But they can't do it unless they have more capacity for people, because it, they did the numbers, and they felt like they couldn't make money or they couldn't do, provide the right kind of service unless they could increase the ability to make more money to be able to take care of the senior citizens. So we have that contract, and I can show it to you, that shows all that and says all that, because they would have been happy to purchase it. But because only 11 people, 10 people, they couldn't make the numbers work.
Do you, do you currently have 10 people?
We have eight people right now.
You have eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, I, um. So you don't, you don't have, you don't currently have some list of, a waiting list of people waiting to get in, right?
We're trying to stop because.
Okay, let me explain. We, 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 we cap at 10. We don't, we can't go any more than 10, because that's all we're.
That's all you can handle.
Yes, we cap at 10. So right now, we have eight, and, you know, we'll, we'll entertain two more people, but nobody. But nobody's knocking on our, down our doors or anything like that.
Okay, and, and I saw some documentation in our paperwork that talks about some vehicles that are on the property.
Oh, I'll, I can explain that.
Can you tell me about that?
We have like people, because we're a ministry, it's called Cars for Christ, and some people had donated their car. So we put the car out front, don't, we didn't know, and a neighbor. We've, I don't think we've ever gotten cited for anything before, but because we had a donated car and we used it to sell it for the ministry, somebody wrote it up, and I, I get that, I get that, you're not supposed to do that. So we haven't done that since, but we did do that.
Okay, and so have you ceased that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, no, we don't do that, uh-uh. Once we had a citation, we looked at it and we realized we made a mistake. You're not supposed to do that, and, and we stopped. We haven't done it, but honestly, we thought because it was a donation to our ministry, it would be okay. But it's not.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions?
Thank you for the background.
Absolutely.
Can you explain to me right now the operations? You are, you are the owners of the property?
It's what's called a 501(c)(3), and we have a board. And it's where we, we used to have a, a church and a drug and alcohol rehab center. We don't do that anymore. It, we just take in transitional people that need a place to stay and may have graduated a, a, a program or something, and they need a place to live. And that's what we do right now. It's called transitional living, where they come in and we supply, you know, maybe meetings. We have a Wednesday meeting, so that's, we try to help our community by, but we used to take them off the streets and work with judges, Thor, things like that. But then it got to be too much for us, because, you know, we've done it almost 30 years. Loved it the whole time, but now it's a little bit hard, which is hard on me.
Yeah, no.
Because it's something I, I'm such a baby, and I apologize, y'all, okay?
She's a good preacher, by the way, but.
Not anymore, it's terrible.
So, so thank, thank you for that. So I just want to make sure, so Genesis Ministries, Inc. owns the land?
Yes, yes.
And is there some operation, like the 501(c)(3), is that a separate operation from Genesis Ministries? And they, or is that a company that has been set up as a 501(c)(3), or is it just Genesis owns it and operates out of it?
That is a government, that means that we are tax deductible.
Nonprofit.
Because we're a nonprofit organization.
Call the 501(c)(3).
Yeah, let me say it a different way. Do you have an operator who you're, has a lease or an operating agreement to run the services or provide the services? Is it like a separate entity?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been, yeah, we got, that goes back all the way back to 2001.
Okay.
You know, that, that we've been, we've been doing that, and, yeah.
Like I can give you Secretary of State, things like that.
I'm just trying to understand who, like, is there like another company that is separate from Genesis Financial, or sorry, Genesis Ministries? Sorry, I got, I got a lease payment on my card due soon, so I saw Genesis Financial. So Genesis Ministries, is there another, any other entity that Genesis Ministries leases? Or, okay, so they, operations?
Just a separate, just single operation.
So if a, a different operator were to come in, if you were to sell this, and they would presumably install their own operations and their own operator, right?
They would have to file everything, they couldn't use any of ours, our name, our 501(c)(3), nothing, it would be a complete separate entity, as if somebody's buying a house.
Okay.
They, you transfer the title, the deed, whatever it is, over to them.
Okay, and then is the expectation that, then whatever, if this were decided to expand by the six seats, that you, that operator, they would be subject to all of those conditions that were imposed as part of that?
I think so, is that right? Like, maybe John knows, I don't know.
Maybe, probably, yeah, because we sat with John, and we explained a lot of it to him.
Okay. So, and you do?
They would just buy, they wouldn't buy our name, they would buy the house, they would buy, and they would do like a personal care home in their own name, and it would be completely separate from anything we've done for the last 27 years.
Okay, got it. And then you said that there's no current discussions or no contracts with the buyer, with an operator? So that if he gets this zoning, then they'll, they'll go ahead and execute the purchase?
Well, I have two contracts, but we had to, they, I have one here if you wanna see it, but it was contingent, one of them was contingent on 16, and the other one was the personal, the, one was 16 and the other one was 22.
Okay.
But we're not gonna do that to our community, we love our little community, we think 16 tops. So they'd have to go with that or, you know.
Okay, all right, thank you for the additional detail.
Absolutely.
What, what is your justification for 16 people? I mean, do you have plans for expansion, or are there plans for changes? Or you're not making any changes, and you just wanna sell it to somebody, even let them put more people in that?
The people that, the people that have been interested in it, to buy it and to make it work, they need about 16 beds in order to, in order to function. Right now, we only, I mean, we, we can have a lot more beds, but we only use, we only use eight of them.
And the 16 want to completely change it and make it beautiful. They wanna like put all new landscaping, and, you know, I have it in this car. They just wanna make it really nicer, because we never wanna let it go to somebody who's not gonna make it nicer and take it to the next level that we took 27 years to take it. Because when we first moved in there, I remember Patso, Pastor Bledsoe from the church and Mr. Wall from the school, they did not like Genesis, because it was torn down. And I mean, so we have done a lot in our community, and we take a lot of pride in what we're doing there.
Okay, in 2024, when you made application, right?
Okay.
Did you submit some documentation for consideration as to what your justification was for 10 beds?
I have it here, but I.
No, I'm just asking you to tell me.
I think what you're asking, no, we made, we wanted to get more beds than at the time, but at the time, I think Joanne.
Burrell was here.
They were here, and she was helping us, and all she could get was 10 or 11. So we just ended up there at 10 or 11. And so she said, if you wanna do more, you're gonna have to go have, reapply. Reapply for 16, and that's why we're here.
Okay, but your justification is that you wanted to sell, not because you have clients for more beds?
First time, we wanted to keep it, but I can't do it, I tried.
All right, I understand. Anybody else?
I just wanted to know if all of the vehicles on property have been registered, and do you have current registration on all of them?
Yes, we have everything, we have license plates, registrations, driver's license. Each person has a folder, and we, you know, because we love working with our community and try to do right, and so we have all of that. Everybody has a file, and all that information is in the file.
Thank you.
Okay, y'all can, oh, have a seat.
Okay.
Mr. Peters, can you tell us what staff's evaluation of this is?
Sure, staff did look at this, and, you know, based on the prior approved land use permit from last year, from 2024, staff recommended denial. You know, staff's feeling that they, they should run this at full capacity with the 10, and then see, you know, see if that comes with any kind of problems or complaints, and then ask for more in the future.
As need arises, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, as need arises, and, and, you know, as they prove that they could run this with more and more patients, you know, and more and more patients.
Right.
But right now, staff just wants to keep it at, at the 10 that were previously approved.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions on that? Okay, at, at this time, I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion. I understand y'all's position and what you'd like to do, but at this point, I don't see a demonstrated need to add residents, because it's not been operated at the level it's approved for already, because those conditions are, remain in effect until June of 2026. And I don't, I don't believe that this, your contemplated sale of the property or hoped-for sale of the property is justification for making this change. So at this, at this time, my motion would be to deny the application.
Second?
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Massey, any discussion? Okay, call the question.
I did have one question. This would act as being with prejudice for one year, is that, is that correct?
Help, help me understand, Commissioner Blowing, what you mean by that? Like what is?
Yeah, ju- just simply that if they were to go ahead and get up to 10 and decide they wanted an 11th, they couldn't, my understanding is they couldn't apply for a year, would be the only concern with the staff comment. But they're at eight right now, and I didn't hear anything about any immediate plans to change, so.
That, that actually is a good point, just to follow up, because if there is a plan that the new operator did have in place with, as a condition of them making investments to, and bringing in operations that they can ramp it up and provide, then they wouldn't be able to apply for another year if it was outright denial.
I'm, I'm open. I mean, right, right now, obviously, what has been said is that they have had the opportunity to come and bring matters forward. So I'm, I'm open to denying it without prejudice, and I would amend my motion.
You second?
Second.
Thank you.
Motion's been amended, and then a second from Commissioner Massey. Any further discussion? Okay, call the question.
You can talk to them.
You can, you can talk to our, to our representative from staff in just a minute, okay? Okay. Your vote, Commissioner Anderson. All right, thank you, and the vote passes 5-0 to, where are we? Denial, sorry, for LUP 35.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, and again, you can talk with our staff. They'll talk you through what those details mean. If you have any additional questions, they'd be happy to follow up with you. All right, that concludes all of our cases for today. We do have one other order of business, and that is to approve our minutes from our past meeting.
I make a motion to approve all meeting, meeting minutes.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second from Commissioner Dance. Any further discussion, call the question. And the minutes passed 5-0. With that, I think we are adjourned, have a good rest of your day.